Yes. Okay, and you gotta get up close. And the turn back off when you're on. Okay, um, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And, oh, wow, Ms. Bauer. I'm not used to you being so far away.
Me either.
Whoa. Would you mind calling the roll, please?
Where's Jimmy?
I don't care.
Okay.
How's that sound?
Okay.
You think I'm on a man?
Yes.
Mayor Natao.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Snyder.
Here.
Councilman Benson. Councilman Bullock.
Here.
Councilwoman Carson.
Here.
Councilman Mackel Downey. Councilman Moreno.
Here.
Councilwoman Teeter. Here. I believe I got you all. Uh, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much, and I just wanna, it's now 3:05, so it's five minutes past when we're supposed to start. Um, just some housekeeping. Uh, for the first part when we do the vote, um, we're gonna, that will be a, um, silent, correct? Secret ballot?
It's going to be, yeah, you guys will fill out the ballot, and then, um, you'll trifle, these are your ballots.
Can you share mine?
Do I have that?
No, not yet, I haven't passed them out yet. Um, I will distribute the ballots, they are a trifold ballot. Uh, you will vote your choice folded in thirds, please. And then I'm gonna have you put it in this box.
Yeah, we did your pledge first, so, but yeah, we'll get to it.
All right, you put it in the box. And then Chief Baca and I, together, will count the votes.
Okay.
And then announce the results.
Terrific.
Now, with Mr. Benson here, not here, how do you wanna handle that?
Um, if he doesn't arrive by the time the vote is taken, um, we're, I don't see that happening.
You can't do that.
Nice try, though.
We'll, we'll go on with six and see how it comes out.
All right, and we could always, we could do that as a, um, we could also count it as an under vote, so.
Okay. Um, why don't we start with, oh, I'm sorry, you wanna say something, then I'm gonna go to pledge allegiance.
Just real quickly, Laura, um, I appreciate the, the procedure that you're going to be using for the ballots this evening. Um, I don't know if you heard, but it was brought to my attention that someone was calling into question whether or not something had leaked out about the past votes last week. And while I rather doubt that that was the case, it was told to me that it was, and that it had come out of City Hall. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that was told, that I was told that directly by someone, one of the candidates. And, um, I questioned what was going on with that, and, uh, City Manager Flannery assured me that he didn't think anything had come out of City Hall. However, even the rest of us don't know how each other voted, so I don't know how anyone on the outside would know when to this minute, I don't know how anyone else voted, so.
Correct.
If you had a comment or anything on that, that'd be great.
Sure, I'm happy to comment.
Okay. Do you wanna do it, or do you want me to do it?
You can do it.
Okay, what, I guess what we probably will wind up doing today is after our secret ballot for the final. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gaylor. We will release the names that were done for the top three, if counsel is so inclined. What you'll get is the list of candidates who actually collected votes, and how many that they got. But that will not be done till after the secret ballot. Is that, did I get that correct?
Um, however you wanna do it, I will tell you that who voted what is, of course, as in any election, whether it is a, a candidate election, whether it is a, uh, collective bargaining unit election that we just have. Um, who voted what is not known, I don't know who voted what. But what I can tell you is, the tabulations themselves, once the votes are tabulated, um, and the, and the vote results are open to the public. Anybody come in my, if anybody comes into my office, if they came into my office before and asked me what they got, I will tell them, because that's not a secret, it's not confidential information, I'm sure the city attorney can, uh, support me on that. Um, you'll see here that I have an envelope, and it's marked 2011 vacancy ballot. The cards that you originally submitted to me are now in this envelope. The ballots, after they are counted, will be submit, will be put into this envelope and sealed, it'll be taped. So those are not public knowledge, but the, the, the numbers, just like in any election.
Yes.
The numbers are not, uh, are not confidential.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I have no problem with anyone knowing what the, what the numbers were. My problem was with someone saying they knew who individually had voted or not voted for anyone in particular, so. It sounds like a great, what, what you're doing, it sounds fine, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mackel Downey?
If I can add, just to, uh, to clarify, I, I don't know how someone could connect who voted for who. I mean, if, for folks that aren't aware, the, the manner in which we voted was a, a white, uh, note card, recipe card, if you will, with a sticker on it that had a pre-printed, printed label of each candidate's name. So each council member received a stack of one note card per candidate with their pre-printed name on it. All that was submitted by a council member was a number. Did you mark this person your first, your second, or third choice? So unless somebody is in immensely capable handwriting analyst to determine who wrote what, there is no direct correlation of any individual council member to a vote, to a candidate. So, I would think it's about as...
That is correct, but I will tell you that if anybody came in, comes into my office, and somebody did come into my office and say to me, "What did I get? What, what, how many votes did I get?", I have, I'm gonna tell them.
Okay.
I mean, that's not a, but, uh, so I will tell, I will tell them, because that is, again, anybody could come into my office and say, "What were the results of that vote?" Of the other night, and of tonight.
Just for housekeeping, um, because we're using mics today, you're gonna need to get up pretty close to them to make sure you're being heard. Um, so if you hear somebody say, "Would you get a little closer?", it's not for anything but the mic. Um, if we could just get everybody to stand for a moment, sign your pledge allegiance. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
To the land of the United States of America. I am the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Mr. Gaylor, do you just wanna run through, I know Ms. Bauer just stated it, but run through one more time, what we're gonna do next for picking the candidate?
The process will be, is the city clerk will hand out the ballots. Each ballot contains three names, and, of course, then you will mark your ballot with your preference, voting one time. Then at the conclusion of the vote, uh, they will be assembled by the city clerk, and the chief of police will assist the city clerk in counting. And then, uh, that count will be conducted immediately, so that then the, the candidate with the most votes will then be sworn in. The city clerk's prepared to administer the oath, and that candidate will then be seated, and will participate in the balance of the meeting today.
Terrific, so, uh, everybody will mark their ballots, and will you, Ms. Bauer, will you be coming around with the? Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
After we've submitted our vote, would that be a good time to make, um, motion to cancel next week's meeting because of CML?
Mr. Gaylor? That be okay?
That would be the appropriate time, yes.
That'll work, Mr. Bullock, and I'll call on you for that. Um, and then, Ms. Bauer, just for your records, um, that Mr. Benson did arrive at 3:07? Just, okay. Just for anybody who might be out there that, oh, I'm sorry. Who didn't see him come in. Now everybody'll know what yours was. Okay. Are we just gonna wait while you count them, or are we gonna go into our closed session first?
I'll make the motion now. Let's make the motion now.
That's fine. Oh, 'cause they'll go back with us.
Right.
Uh, I'm just a little slower today. It seems like, well, some of us were here at seven o'clock this morning, trying to be our cheerful selves for North Metro's event, and, uh, uh, for this one, right?
Can I?
Okay. Mr. Bullock, we're gonna go to you.
Um, Mayor and City Council, I'd like to make a motion to cancel next week's meeting, because some of us will be up at CML on the 20th.
That's, okay. Timeout, Mr. Moreno.
Uh, well, there's a second, so I would...
Okay, Mr. Benson will be the second, then we'll go into discussion.
I looked at the agenda, uh, what we have, and there's a lot on it. I think most of us aren't going to CML until Tuesday, so if at all possible, I, I would actually suggest that we don't cancel the meeting.
Okay. I was gonna go to Mr. Flannery next, because I don't have my list with me, and, and while Mr. Flannery's looking that up, Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I was wondering if you could tell us who's gonna go and who's not, how many are we gonna have here?
City manager? Okay, so who's going?
I'll be, I have a Monday reservation.
Okay.
Oh, God.
Mr. Bullock, I know you have a motion in a second, but...
I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Uh, Mr. Benson is okay for him to withdraw the motion?
Sure.
So our meeting on Monday night will remain?
And I'm sorry, since I was counting votes, and I am taking minutes for the special meeting.
Okay.
Um, can, I get the, where are we at with that, motion?
Okay, Mr. Bullock made a motion to, uh, cancel the meeting for, uh, for the Monday of the 20th, uh, for CML. Uh, Mr. Benson seconded it. Mr. Moreno had a question, and Ms. Snyder had a question on how many people were going. The only person that would be gone on Monday would be Mr. Bullock, so the meeting will remain.
I withdrew my motion.
He withdrew his motion, and Mr. Benson agreed with the withdrawal.
Thank you, that's all I need.
Okay. Yeah, uh, going along with that, um, starting, uh, tomorrow, I will be gone until the 26th. Uh, Ms., uh, Mayor Pro Tem Snyder will be filling in, or will take on the role of the mayor. Yeah. Yeah, there'll be plenty, yeah, 'cause everybody'll be here but me, and a new person.
So I'll be taking over as of tomorrow?
So, Mr.? After, starting tomorrow.
Starting tomorrow.
Starting tomorrow. And, Mr. Bullock, you'll be at CML next Monday.
I'll be at CML next Monday.
Okay, so that'll give you an excuse, not, so we don't have to worry about that later.
Um, I hope not.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to have the council permission to miss next Monday's meeting, um, but I might be here, 'cause I feel guilty about not...
Oh.
But I feel guilty about spending that money, so I don't wanna drive up at two o'clock in the morning either, but...
No.
Okay, 'cause, uh, that's what I might do. Oh, okay, so I might just have my reservation rolled.
Okay. And just, when you finally do know what you will be doing, if you'll just send an email out to council, just letting us know what will take place. Okay?
Starting tomorrow?
Starting tomorrow? Call yourself Madam Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Flannery?
This is on?
Yeah.
I'd like to just, uh, let you know, uh, you may recall that Lynn Halliwell is going up to, uh, Seattle at the end of this month.
Oh.
Um, I'm not sure, you know, it's really cloudy and rainy up there a lot, so I... But, you know, love has interesting ways of bringing you places. Um, but, in, in the meantime, I wanted to let you know that Michelle Rogers, over here, is, uh, transitioning in while Lynn is transitioning out, so we've had an overlap there for, uh, training. Uh, Michelle is also helping down in, uh, planning and zoning, uh, with community development in, in the interim as well, so... But I thought, since we had an opportunity and I could introduce you, I'd wanna do that, so.
That is wonderful, welcome onboard.
Welcome.
And remember, the answer can be no. Yes, Ms. Snyder? We're just actually killing...
Yeah, we're just kinda filling in. Since we have an extra minute, um, I just want, I just wanted to ask the council if they were okay with me attending the Fall Public Safety Crime Prevention Committee meeting? They're trying to figure out when it's gonna be and where it's gonna be, but we need to let them know if we're going to be able to attend, so if the council doesn't have, doesn't have any issue with that, I, I would like to be able to attend that. And I am not going to CML, so that I can attend the fall meeting.
Any challenges with that, Mr. Bullock?
At the same time, while you're considering that, um, meeting for the National League of Cities, um, I've got it right here in front of me somewhere, uh, the educational group is having the, uh, Fall Summit, that I'd like to have permission from council to attend also.
Okay. Okay, anybody have challenges with either of those requests? Mr. Moreno? I'm sorry, you can't go, you've been away too much. Go ahead, sir.
Um, I, I sent, and, I was a little premature and kinda sent the announcement out on Facebook and Twitter, but, um, I've invited, been invited along with a few other young elected officials from around the country to, uh, uh, go to the White House, and meet with, um, senior advisors to the President, and, as well as with President Obama, so, um, I will be, um, I plan on using funds from my discretionary account, there's no need for an extra appropriation from the council, um, but just wanted to give you an FYI, and, uh, I'll be leaving. I'll, I'll be leaving for that this Thursday through, uh, Monday, but I'll be back in time for the meeting, uh, next Monday.
Getting to be a pretty important guy, huh? Washington DC. Okay. Ms. Bauer?
Yes, sir.
We've just been kinda hedging, waiting for you.
Not a problem, I'm all set. Yes, I am, ready.
Okay.
Um, the vote results are Paulo Diaz with seven votes, Christine Sumner with one vote, Mr. Sandoval with no votes. That makes Mr. Diaz your new council member-at-large.
Okay. Can we also get a big hand for, uh, for the other two candidates who did a wonderful job? And hopefully, we are gonna see all the other two of you, uh, also in November.
I would like to now ask Mr. Diaz to come up to the podium, so that we, I'd like to ask Mr. Diaz to come up to the podium, so I could give him the oath of office, um, so that he can be seated with council.
You do it.
Mr. Diaz, if you would raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Paulo Diaz.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and the ordinances of the City of Commerce City.
The Charter and the ordinances of the City of Commerce City.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Pertaining to the office.
Pertaining to the office.
Of council member of the City of Commerce City.
Of council member of the City of Commerce City.
To the, uh, Colorado.
Colorado.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations. Mr.? Oh, good, you had already done that, I was gonna ask him if you wouldn't mind just saying a few words, and maybe give us just a small little bit of background. Uh, more for the audience than probably for council. But I wanna limit you to like, two minutes. That's it. 'Cause, once you start sitting down with us, you'll find out you get way too much time.
Awesome, sounds good. Perfect, thank you, guys, my name is Paulo Diaz, and I live over in the frontier neighborhood. And, um, my wife and I, we moved here probably about six or so years ago, six plus years ago. And we now have a three-year-old daughter, Miley, and a one-year-old son named Elijah. And, um, this is basically where we planted our roots, and my wife and I have definitely fallen in love with Commerce City. And, um, really excited about the promise of Commerce City. And so, without a doubt, knowing that I only have two minutes, I will keep it to that, and just say that I'm really excited to serve as councilman for Commerce City.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Mr., Ms. Moreno?
Uh, just wanna take this opportunity to, to welcome Councilman Diaz, uh, to our group. Um, I, I'm, I'm so very excited to have him onboard. Uh, the things that he's been able to do as President of the Cultural Council, in such a short amount of time. Uh, I think that's the energy that we need on this council, and I'm really excited to have him.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mackel Downey?
And I know it was stated just a moment ago, but I just wanna take another moment to congratulate not only Ms. Sumner, Dr. Sumner, and Mr. Sandoval for making this final three, but really encourage you to not walk away at, as, as, uh, as you leave this meeting today, but please, please, please stay engaged, I would encourage you both to put your hat in the ring this November. Um, I, this was a difficult, difficult decision. Um, I mean, to start with 21 candidates, and have that reduced, um, by a, a small measure that evening, but, um, I, I saw many of us sitting here late that evening, you know, reflecting on these choices, and it was, um, I think it was, it was great to have such qualified folks, um, step up, and I, uh, really am excited to see, um, see you all make it to this point, and I, I hope to see you continue to seek to stay involved.
Yes, Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I too, wanted to say thank you to all of the candidates that applied. Um, all of you were really great, we had some really great interviews, I think that we have some wonderful people here in the city, and I would really truly love to see all of you come forward and run here in November, so I just wanna say congratulations to Paulo, who I think is a great guy and will do a great job, and I'd also like to congratulate all of you, and say I really hope to see you on the ballot here in November, thanks.
Mr. Benson?
I wanna congratulate Mr. Diaz also, and, um, you know, every time that we have interviews for boards and commissions or whatever, we always are overwhelmed. Am I coming through on this? We're always overwhelmed with a high degree of, uh, uh, intelligence and, and learning and commitment that all the people that we interview have, it's, it's amazing, we have a great pool of resources in this city to draw from, and I appreciate all of you, uh, applying for this process, and taking your chances, and, uh, hopefully, we will see you in, uh, November. Thank you.
I know, Ms., Ms., go ahead, Mr. Bullock, 'cause Mr. Moreno's always last.
Always.
Um, in order not to spend too much more time, ditto with everything everyone else said. Thank you for putting in, thank you for going through the process, and definitely do not stop now. I expect to see your names on the ballot in November, thank you. From all the council.
Mr., Mr. Moreno, I always let you get the last word.
I appreciate that. Um, I just wanna request another, one more round of applause for all the candidates that, that did put their name.
Okay. What I would like to do now is take a motion to go into executive session, but before I get the first one, after we vote on that, I wanna take just a couple of minutes that we can do personal congratulations to the top three candidates before they, before they all leave, before we go in the back, but please, just a couple of minutes. Uh, Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I move to go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations concerning an economic development opportunity in Commerce City.
Okay, Ms. Snyder?
Second the motion?
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same. We will go into executive session, just take a couple of minutes before you go back, thank you.
Oh, yeah, that was, just didn't come out of my shot. If ever. You might wanna ask, uh, you might wanna talk to Jerry or Bob.
Okay.
But, yeah. You can go talk to them in my office, they can do it.
Okay, uh, we're done with executive session, there's no action that needs to be taken regarding what took place in there. So, uh... Do what? Am I not on?
How about now? Am I on now?
Yes.
Mr. Moreno, look here.
Yeah.
We only usually make two in the back of the room.
Hello, there. Is that one it?
Are you getting yours?
Hello?
Do I have anything on mine? It is on there now? Okay. So we're, we're gonna go back to the study session, and, Mr. Flannery?
Mr. Mayor, can we adjourn the first meeting, please?
Oh, okay. Uh, if there be no further business before this council, we will adjourn the special meeting and go on to our study session.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And, Mr. Flannery, uh, Mr. Mackel Downey, are you leading off?
We, uh, two years ago, this council took a, a bold step and, and changed how we plan.
year, the discussions and the decisions that come out of this, I think, are going to be critical to the success of our, of our city over time. So, with that.
Thank you, Councilmember Mackel Downey. Let me, let me first start by congratulating this council for the work that you've done. From a staff perspective, we know what our jobs are, and we know how to do our jobs as professionals, but it's good to have a vision of where we want to go as a city, and each, each level of the organization, whether it be an entry-level employee who just started last week, all the way up to a department head, needs to know where we want to go as a city, and you all have provided that vision. And so, we're in this process, and this is a process that's evolved, as Councilmember Mackel Downey has mentioned, over the last several years, and personally, I think it has made the staff's lives easier, knowing where we want to align with you. And so, at each step of the road, we've, we've looked at where we're going, and each step of the road, we've actually identified a better way of doing things as time has gone by. Each year, over the last three years, we have seen the budget get tighter. Through innovation and creative methods, staff has proposed a balanced budget each year. We have not had to dip into reserves. We have not had to eliminate service to the public. We've reduced some levels of service in light of doing other types of cuts that are a little bit more closer to the bone. And in fact, we've been able to give our workforce modest raises, and last year, actually, a fairly decent raise of 2% if they are found competent in their, in their jobs. They can go higher if they are exemplary. Municipalities in the region have not been able to do that. A number of our neighbors have not been able to do that. So, we, we are very blessed when it comes to those types of situations. This council's journey started almost right after your last election in 2009. It doesn't seem that far ago, but it's been almost two years. In February of '10, we held a retreat to set priorities for this council. Almost 116 specific priorities later, we implemented major and minor changes to the city government, based on your direction. City council has taken their position as the leaders of the city, and we have set the vision that staff has truly appreciated and benefited from, as I mentioned. Just a few short months ago, the council elevated their goals to a new visionary level and directed staff to carry them forward into this year and beyond. Those goals, and the goals of this year differed in the number and breadth. They were much smaller, but they were much broader. That allowed the departments to actually align their specific duties and their goals in the department and your goals from last year with your broader direction. The leadership team of the city then met in April, just a couple of months ago, to categorize and align their duties in the previous year's council's priorities with the overarching goals set by the council. One of your main directions to staff has been to renew and update the long-range financial plan. This retreat is being held in order to identify your key priorities in moving that plan forward for the next seven to 10 years. As a city, we are healthy and strong. As mentioned in the State of the City by the mayor, we are strong. However, I would reiterate, they were also only getting through this fiscally conservative, through, through fiscally conservative approaches, and that we are not out of this economic downturn. As you can see in every day throughout the world news, the local news, the national news, this economy is only slowly recovering, so we, we should caution ourselves in how we pursue capital expenditures and how we move into financial expenditures for the city. We may have sizable one-time monies, but should be, but we should be targeted and careful on how we expend them. And with that, word of caution, but there's an excitement here, and I need to say that you may have noticed our old friend, the elephant, and we'll be getting into some exercises, and the council has been gracious enough to let staff be creative in how we approach this, make it fun, but also really get the idea across to everybody that's watching online and on TV that these, these are issues that are challenging, but we want to make them easier to understand, and this is a way we can do that. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Tinklinburg.
Thank you, Mr. Flannery. The, one thing I want to say right at the start is, this isn't a budget meeting. Now, that's obvious to most of you, but someone called it a budget meeting, and, you know, my hair immediately stood on end. It's like, no, that's coming later. This is, this is a visioning project, if you will. It's really, what does the council want to do in the next 10 years? 10 years from now, 2020, what do you want this community to look like? That in turn drives, okay, what projects need to be done, and that in turn drives what money needs to be available to do those projects, because the elephant is in the room, and it's marked with all those labels that we talked about, you know, including even new schools. How do we, as one of the local governments here in Commerce City, provide for all of that? And so, that's an exercise where you start looking at the priorities of what do you want to have built next and when, and that determines how much money we need to have. As Mr. Flannery said, the economy still is weak. It's recovering, but it still is weak, and so it puts us into a position where, yes, we need to plan, but at the same time, we need to remain conservative in our year-to-year budgeting as well. So, what I'm suggesting that we work towards as a goal today is, you tell us what you want built, but then we build the framework that allows continued feedback in terms of coming back to council and saying, okay, the economy is doing this now. Are you ready to move in this direction or take this step? So, so we start building stepping stones, if you will, so that we can reach that vision for the future. So, with that, I'm going to turn to the presentation, and as Mr. Flannery said, back in January, you set the priorities for 2011, and all of that was aimed towards building a quality community for Commerce City, but we need to build an actual action plan that allows us to, to reach that, that ultimate goal. As I've said a number of times, we identified over a billion dollars' worth of work that needs to be done by the time Commerce City reaches build-out. Now, build-out isn't for many years yet, you know, possibly 20, 30 years, depending on the rate of growth that we anticipate. We've been able to do about a quarter of a billion dollars' worth of work in the last 10 years, you know. Are we able to do another quarter billion? That's one of the questions, you know. It depends on the funding sources. So, this really boils down to how do we, how do we not only plan this next 10 years, but also build and build the groundwork so that we can do the next 20 to 30 years down the road. As we talked about with the elephant, you know, there's water, there's water means, there's right-of-way preservation, there's parks, roads, open space, trails, schools, stormwater drainage. All of those things need to be built in order to have a good quality community. The other challenge is, how do we still fund the general fund operation and the maintenance? How do we fund property acquisition? How do we fund the capital construction? I'm going to run through a number of slides that sort of recap what we've gone through in recent presentations, again, just to remind ourselves of sort of the groundwork that's been laid, but also as a introduction for, for Mr. Diaz, so bear with me, if you will. Appreciate your, your patience. Looking at the general fund revenues, both the actual and projected, this is an updated slide from what was presented to you back in January, or actually, back last year, and you'll notice that 2010 stands out as a really severe spike, and that's because of the one-time tax settlements from tax audits. The revenue dropped off from 2006 to 2007. That was due to the housing market slowing down at that time already, and then from 2008 to 2009, it really dropped off, and that was due to the national recession. You see also the projected slide, projected revenue estimates, the high, medium, low, and the ultra-low, and so you can draw your own conclusions in terms of the slope of those various estimations. In terms of the comments on the revenue estimates, the numbers that are in red have changed from the original presentation. There was a request to provide that information in terms of what has changed, so the ultra-low is now at 2.1% growth, and part of that is due to using the 2010 numbers as a base rather than the 2009 numbers, and then also low estimates is at 4.2% growth. The middle estimate assumes both growth in the number of existing businesses and growth within the existing businesses, so that would be a 5.5% growth, and then the high estimate provides the upside scenario with a 6.8% growth. Those middle and high estimates may provide money to add employees, increase services, and add new programs and capital projects. The reason that's important is because as the population grows, we do need to add services to provide the same level of service to that growing population, and historically, that has meant that the number of staff members, the growth in the number of staff members has pretty well mirrored the growth in the population.
Roger, if I could just ask real quick, the numbers where you highlighted the changes, have those, were those revised up or revised down?
Those are actually revised down.
Okay.
We talked about revenue vulnerabilities, highway users' tax, motor vehicle registrations, and cigarette tax. Those are subject to legislative change. They ended up not changing the first two, and I'd have to defer to Ms. on what they did with the cigarette tax, but that's the smallest of the three. And then, road and bridge tax can also be modified by the Adams County Commissioners. So, those are the revenues that are vulnerable, so here's a summary of them. The amount at risk due to legislative action would be 1.7 million, and 400,000 is from Adams County road and bridge revenue. My recommendation is that we look at moving those out of the general fund, move them into the capital improvements fund. That does a couple of things for us. It stabilizes the revenue in the general fund, and it also provides money for capital projects that isn't available now. If we backfill that money in the general fund, then the general fund has a more stable revenue base, and it also provides a downside scenario if the economy drops off again, and if a revenue drops off, we would be able to move that money back out of the capital projects, back into the general fund as a failsafe. So, that's why I think it would be a win-win. However, the big unknown question is, what do we backfill that with? I have a suggestion, but again, that's council's decision, certainly not mine. Looking at the expenditure side, these are the actual expenditures from 2000 through 2010. The 2011 number is the budget number. It's not actual, and then the projections, the low, medium, and the high range up from that. Comments on that is that the low would be growing by 3.8% growth. That would basically provide no money for additional staff, no service expansion, no capital projects. There would be possibility of one-time funds coming again from tax audits, but we can't plan on that, particularly not for operating budget. And if we did do capital projects, we would have to budget for the operation and maintenance costs that would result from those projects. So, again, we have to keep those in balance. The medium estimate is for 6% growth, and the high estimate is for 7.9% growth. Now, the medium and high estimates have not been fiscally constrained. In other words, we have not gone through, like we do in a budget process, and reduced those to try to match revenues. They also assume some growth in staffing and services. So, then combining the expenditures with the revenues in terms of the projections, you'll notice that the high expenditure exceeds the high revenue estimate, and also the medium expenditure exceeds the medium revenue estimate. Low revenues, we have fiscally constrained, and so those do not exceed the low revenues. So, recap, low revenue slightly exceeds the low revenue, the low expenditure estimate, and when departments start estimating what staff they would need to add in order to deal with population growth, then the expenditures begin exceeding the revenue estimates, both with the medium and the high. So, we would need to constrain those expenditures.
Can, just a quick question, Roger.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the revenues versus expenditures and the low, medium, and high estimates, can you help characterize some of the factors that go into the medium versus the high estimate? I think it's easy to sort of, from an expenditures perspective, understand that based on population growth and increasing cost of providing services, but on the revenue side, what are the factors that go into low, medium versus high?
Basically, it boils down to what percentage of growth you assume, and so, those are based on the different percentages of growth, particularly with sales and use tax, since that's our, it provides over 70% of the general fund budget operation, operating budget. And so, it comes back to, do you assume that we will not have much growth in the number of businesses, but we will see some growth within the existing business, the amount of activity that they have? So, that, that's basically, the medium estimate has only a very modest growth in the number of businesses, and then some growth in the amount of business within the existing group of businesses. The high assumes both, you know, a more aggressive amount of growth in the revenues and also in the number of businesses that, that will be in Commerce City. So, it's a factor of both of those, and then the other elements would be, it assumes, the high, for example, would assume a higher interest rate, so we'll earn more on our investments. It assumes more building construction, and therefore we'll see more permit fees and plan check fees, all of that type of thing. So, it's a combination of all of those factors.
Great, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Then quickly summarizing the capital projects that we reviewed. City facilities, this is not the total list, but this is what is estimated to be needed in the next 20 years. So, you have the municipal service center expansion, both Phase 1A and Phase 1B. The first one would be in 2015, and that would be 2.3 million. tax, since that's our, it provides over 70% of the general fund budget operation, operating budget. And so it comes back to, do you assume that we will not have much growth in the number of businesses, but we will see some growth within the existing business, the amount of activity that they have? So that, that's basically, the medium estimate has only a very modest growth in the number of business, and then some growth in the amount of business within the existing group of businesses. The high assumes both, you know, a more aggressive amount of growth in the revenues and also in the number of businesses that, that will be in Commerce City. So it's a factor of both of those. And then the other elements would be, it assumes, the high, for example, would assume a higher interest rate, so we'll earn more on our investments. It assumes more building construction, and therefore we'll see more permit fees and plan check fees, all of that type of thing. So it's a combination of all of those factors.
Great, that's helpful, thank you.
Then quickly summarizing the capital projects that we reviewed. City facilities, this is not the total list, but this is what is estimated to be needed in the next 20 years. So you have the municipal service center expansion, both Phase 1A and Phase 1B. The first one would be in 2015, and that would be 2.3 million. A police substation which would replace the satellite station that now exists in the North Range. The satellite station is a leased facility, and it's basically temporary headquarters. It provides some staff overflow from this facility, because this facility is at capacity for the police department. A police substation assumes that that would be built in cooperation with other agencies, whether it's the fire district or the water and sanitation district. We don't know all of the partners there, but it assumes that we would be able to partner with others and build a facility that would provide multiple services. This would be only the police, the cost that is due to the portion of the building that would be attributable to the police department only and city use only. The municipal service center expansion Phase B would be 1.9 million, estimated for 2020, and the total for that is 14.4 million, primarily in the last half of this decade. Stormwater drainage, this lists all of the projects that are unfunded. These are projects in the existing developed area. There are many more projects, but those are funded through the drainage impact fee that is, that is taken in from the development as it occurs in the Northern Range. So these projects have to be funded at some point, not necessarily within the next 10 years. What has been estimated is that there's going to need to be 3. almost $4 million per year to fund these projects and the compliance with the federal regulations on stormwater discharge, all of the water quality issues. So if you multiply that times 10, that gives you 33 million, 33.7 million in effect, that needs to be funded over the next 10 years. And so we need a mechanism to be able to do that. We have some funding that goes to this right now out of the general fund, about 650,000 per year. So if we have a funding source that comes up with that 3.3 million per year, it frees up 650,000 in the general fund. It's not in addition to, but it frees that up in the general fund, so it helps the general fund, but it would fund this activity. Transportation projects, there's a number of these projects that total up to 173 million dollars in round numbers. Tower Road, 96th Avenue, 88th Avenue, 72nd Avenue. There's annual appropriations that need to happen for signal improvements, so that would be 862,000 per year. Rosemary Street, Colorado Boulevard, 56th Avenue. All of those projects are widening of existing roads, with the exception of 96th Avenue A, which is building a missing segment from basically Buckley Road to Tower Road. And so all of the rest would be widening to accommodate additional growth and traffic volume. Roger?
Yes, sir. Um, if sometime in the future Commerce City is going to have to look at taking over Highway 2. I know it's not on here, and I know it's one of the things that a lot of people have said, that we don't have the funding for it, but it seems like the only way we can ask funding for it is to have it under our jurisdiction. In 1998, when I first came on council, it would have been 28 million dollars to widen Highway 2 from 80th Avenue all the way up to 120th. Now it's over 128 million dollars, well over 128 million dollars. The longer we wait to take control of Highway 2, the state isn't going to do anything with it, and they're just going to let it set. I'm thinking that sooner or later, we are going to have to put this on our list as one of the projects at Highway 2. We're going to have to ask the state to either give it over to us and help us with doing something, but we can't ask for funding for it if we don't own it. And we need to own it in order to do what we need to do with it. So I'm suggesting or asking that in the future, when we look at transportation projects, that Highway 2 be added as one of the projects on here. I don't know how the rest of the council feels about it, but I know that it is something that sooner or later, we're going to have to do.
Yes, we've been talking about Highway 2 for years and years, because there's really no easy answer for it. There was some discussion at one point in time about them giving us the road but not wanting to give us the dollars that went with it. So it's going to be something that we're definitely going to have to continue to look at and figure out a way to, to handle in the future. I would agree, we need to have some discussions about that. The other thing I wanted to add on, Roger, if you would, was I've had several calls from some businesses up in the area of 60th, up towards, you know, where the road gets, you know, there's a lot of heavy traffic. I'm sure Brian McBrum knows what I'm talking about, the more industrial side of it. They're calling me, telling me that it's a terrible shape, that it needs some, some work up there for them, and that every time, you know, it's a heavily, it's a trucking area, it has a heavy industry up in that area. But they've complained to me that it's a very difficult area, and that we need to possibly take a look at that, and I'd like to see us do that if we can, to see if there's any transportation dollars we could put into at least doing something, if not completely fix it, at least make it a lot more user-friendly than it is now. So that'd be something else I'd like the council to consider looking at as well, when we talk about transportation dollars.
Can Mr. Patterson? Yes, I want to say that, is this microphone getting through?
Yeah.
All right, all right. I want to say that I totally agree with Mr. Bullock. And the discussion about Highway 2 has, has been going on for a long time, and the reason it gets nowhere is that CDOT still controls Highway 2. They don't give us any money to maintain it. We pay all the money to maintain it. We pay all the money to do the snow removal on it. We send CDOT a bill, they never pay it, so we might as well, we've been expecting CDOT to give us some money to help maintain it. I don't think that's ever going to happen. It might happen 10 or 15 years from now, but we certainly can't wait that long. We need to have control of Highway 2, and the only way we're going to get it is just ask, okay, give us the road, we're maintaining it anyway, we're paying for it, just go ahead and give it to us. You don't have to give us any money to maintain it. But that needs to happen. These discussions have been going on for way too, for maybe 10 years. That's way too long. But we have to have control of Highway 2, and we don't now, because it's under the control of CDOT. So I would hope that we can get some discussions going on with CDOT, just to take over the road, so that we can do what we want to with it. Because right now, we can't. Thank you.
All right, yes, Roger, I agree with the other three about Highway 2. As you remember, when it was, the lighting was put in on 2004, we had those put in place because they would be movable. Is that not correct, Mr. Bullock? I agree with that. Also, on the transportation page, the 88th Avenue project, is that 76 to Highway 2, or is it Buckley to Tower Road? And my father-in-law said that if we ever cut that road from Buckley to Tower, that leads you to the airport, that I would have a legacy named after me, by the way.
In answer to your question, that is from Highway 2 to I-76.
Okay. Thank you. And are we waiting then? It wouldn't make much sense to pave that from Buckley to Tower if they're going to continue with 96 to complete it, is that correct?
I, I would have to defer to someone else, but I would think that would be correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Specifically, we are, we actually had to reschedule a meeting with Don Hunt, the new CDOT director, so this will be something that I'll put on the agenda as far as the Highway 2 discussion, and seeing what we can negotiate as far as a fair, fair amount from CDOT to help us maintain. And then secondly, to Council, our Mayor Protem Snyder's point, I think I'm pretty much aware, if it's the same one I'm thinking of on 60th, where the trucking is, there's a real jurisdictional issue there, there's a CDOT right-of-way, but it's, it's kind of a culmination of a lot of different problems. So that road is really in disrepair. And we've, that's probably another item I'll put on the agenda to speak to Mr. Hunt on.
I did not want to give Gray Clemens a heart attack when I said that. So it's not one of these unfunded mandates that we're saying that we know you don't have money for everything else anyway, but we're spending our money anyway, so I didn't want you to think, oh, God, he's lost his mind again. So, okay.
I did have, I did have a question, another question. Assuming that we did have control of Highway 2 right now, and it wasn't under the control of CDOT, where would it be on this list, do you think, Mr. Tinklinburg?
The transportation plan which you adopted when back, I'd have to defer to Mr. Clemens, when was the transportation plan adopted? 2010. It lists it as a medium priority, and it's actually at the bottom of the medium priority list. So if you happen to have your transportation plan available to you, it's on page 78. So there's, there's high priority projects and medium priority projects. The reason I didn't include it on the list here is, these are only projects that the city has total control of, so.
Right.
I, I wasn't trying to prejudge what you rank, it's just a matter of what do we control? So if you want us to add it to the list, we certainly can add it to the list.
Yeah, that was just what I was asking, that everything that you've done assumes that we have no control, but, but once we get control, I'm just wondering, I think it ought to be somewhere on this list, and certainly I agree that Tower Road is, has to be number one, because that's where the economic development's going to occur, out there between Tower and E-470. I certainly agree that that needs to be number one. Thank you.
Just to add on the Highway 2 point, I think, as Mr. Tinklinburg referenced, it sat not on the high priority list as part of the, the transportation strategic plan, because we've affected the capacity of that through the investment that the city has made with 80th, 88th, 96th, and 104th. Clearly, as we've all talked about, Tower Road does hit higher on that priority list because it is at capacity today. And obviously, these other roads are, are at or nearing capacity. I think the one thing that we, we need to keep in mind when we talk about adding Highway 2 to our plate, is that the minute that gets added, we also have a corresponding operational responsibility to, to maintain that road. And I don't remember offhand what the cost per lane mile is for that, but it's a fairly sizable chunk that we don't have in the general fund today to support that road. So whatever the strategy is regarding Highway 2, we need to make sure that we're covering not only just an ownership on paper, but an operational line item as well.
I have a response to that. Aren't we already paying to maintain Highway 2? And if it's, if it's turned into a new road, it would cost less to maintain it, I would think, but we're already paying. We're already paying for it. We're sending a bill to CDOT, but they're not paying. So I don't know how we would be.
I think Mr. Clemens can address it. We do snowplow, but maintaining it, we do not specifically maintain it.
Highway 2 remains CDOT maintenance responsibility and operations responsibility. On occasion, when their priorities, especially for snow removal, fall behind, our police department will contact us when special conditions exist for snow removal. But operationally and maintenance-wise, Highway 2 remains CDOT responsibility.
Mr. Clemens, could you go into a little bit about the improvements that would be made to Colorado Boulevard under this, under the cost estimate presented?
Without going to my, the notes in the back of the book, I recall it's a four-lane facility because it's a collector roadway with curb gutter sidewalk and a median, the common section. And the importance of this is for connectivity to the metro, North Metro Corridor Transit Station there, it's 72nd and Colorado Boulevard. 72nd would also have a similar modified section to meet that.
The parameters of that project were from Brighton Boulevard to 74th Avenue. Continue on, Mr. Mayor? Okay?
Sorry, just one more question on this transportation front. The, the one issue I see missing, and I think has become, what I see as a priority, considering the note, the amount of traffic, is the intersection at 60th and Vasquez, you know, right where all those roads come together. You know, I know that we've done some improvements in terms of red light cameras to make that intersection a little more safe, but it's, you know, you go through there at any time during rush hour, and it is, it's madness. And it takes forever to get anywhere when you go through that intersection. But that's not one that I do see on our transportation list. And that's one that I think should be on it, because I think with the amount of growth that has been experienced, and that becoming a huge commuter corridor, I think it's really important that we look at some safer and pedestrian-friendly particularly design, because that, that area is, all those roads intersect at one area, and it's, it's pretty bad.
The US Highway 85 corridor was listed as a medium priority project as well. There was a study done back in probably eight, 10 years ago, that looked at that entire corridor. One of the complications, of course, is not only the volume of traffic, but the inter, interconnection with the other streets. That, that intersection is also a high-revenue intersection for the city in terms of, you know, the amount of sales and use tax that's generated, so, you know, I would want to caution everyone that we want to proceed carefully there, that we don't choke off the business activity that's there, you know, and affect, adversely affect those businesses. So that would be one of the downsides, but, but you're right, it's a very busy intersection.
If I can just, just add, I think, just this illustrate, the discussion on this page alone has illustrated, I think, the theme of this meeting, which is our needs exceed our capabilities today from a revenue perspective. If memory serves, the, the project that Mr. Moreno references is in the hundreds of millions of dollars to affect that, and obviously has implications with the, the US Federal Highway Administration, and the state, and the city, so. And I think, I actually was just talking with one of the gentlemen in the Engineers Department at the Outreaches the other night about this very road, and, you know, I think the ultimate vision was, or called for, a tunneling of Highway 85 through that area so that the surface street network could, could remain. But it's a massive effort, and I think these are, the, the projects that are listed here, I think we heard two things. One, they're, they're projects that are directly in our control, and B, they also were ranked highly through our transportation strategic plan. So I would think that we need to be careful to not just throw projects back into the mix, and that we use the work that's been done over the last year or two, whether it's through the comp plan or the transportation strategic plan to guide the order in which we talk about these things. And so this is a narrow list, it's not everything, but it's not intended to be everything. But if we decide to change those priorities, then it, it escalates the, I think, the level of this discussion and the level of revenues and funding that we would have to identify. So I just, might use sense on kind of how we focus our effort.
Thank you. I, I would like to comment on that because of the fact that if you look at the scope of projects, a lot of them feed into the same roads we're talking about. And as we improve the roads like 96th and 88th, and increase the traffic flow coming up to Highway 2 from 76, coming up on 96 to Highway 2, we're feeding into a road we don't control. So what we're doing is we're feeding into a funnel. Sooner or later, we're going to have to take control of the funnel. And I mean, I understand totally what Jason said, but sometimes I'm thinking that we aren't the masters of our own design. We get to master just parts of it, and then we get to a point- We get to master just parts of it, and then we get to a point, and we look like we failed. So as we're thinking about the things that we do control, let's consider the things we don't control and how it's going to make us look in the future, because the future is what we're talking about.
Okay, thank you, sir. Turning to parks, open space, recreation, trails, again, a lot of projects listed, and, you know, some of these ranked higher on the citizen survey than others, but here are all the projects without any assumed ranking. On my part, anyway, I don't know if any were intended by Parks and Recreation, and I would have to defer to Ms. Keith about that. But loop trails, $7.9 million if you did all of them. There's O'Brien Canal Trail, that's $5.6 million. Second Creek Trail, $1.7 million, and then other neighborhood connections and loops, $588,000. There's the Fairfax Park drainage and irrigation renovation, $2.2 million. However, in subsequent conversations, because we've received a grant for some of that work, we anticipate being able to fund it with existing funding sources, pass-through funding that we have, plus possibly additional grants, so we may not have to fund it or consider it in this list of priorities, if you will. Second Creek Neighborhood Park, $3.2 million. There's Rec Center renovation, new recreation center, outdoor aquatic center, all of those different projects that we need your direction in terms of what you see as the priorities and what should we focus on. Total of that list is $68 million. The improvements for golf, we have the restaurant upgrades, we have large equipment that needs to be replaced, over a million dollars' worth, that can be spread out over the 10 years. Building repairs, $281,000. At the end of the decade, the cart paths need to be looked at and possibly replaced. There's the irrigation system which will need to be replaced probably at the end of the decade, and also pond liners need to be replaced. So total of $3.7 million for golf. So Parks and Recreation looking at a total of $72 million in projects as possibilities. So if you look at all of that, that's $293 million. In terms of pass-through revenues, we receive money from Conservation Trust, which is the lottery funds from the state. We also get Adams County Open Space Funds that come off of the open space tax. Those tally up to about a little over three and a half million per year, so $35.5 million for the 10 years. So, you know, you, I'm sorry, not only those, but also the Adams County Transportation Tax money, and also the tipping fee money off of the BFI, used to be BFI, now it's Allied Waste Republic, some new name. The landfill by the airport, we receive money off of that. So the total of all of that is $35.5 million for the next 10 years. So $35 million off of $293, you can see we have just a little bit of a gap yet. So using the metaphor we used earlier, we don't have an ice chest to preserve the entire elephant. So either we need to shrink the elephant, or we need to come up with new funding sources. To shrink the elephant, we need your priority ranking on projects, and then we need to identify the ongoing operation and maintenance costs for those projects, and establish phasing plans. And then if you want new projects, we're going to have to identify and establish funding sources for those. Now, it's possible to accomplish that, but again, it comes down to some tough choices, because we just don't have enough money to do everything now. So what we need from you is what projects do you want to fund with existing funds? Well, some. There are a limit to the number of rabbits that I can pull out of the hat. As I told someone, they're starting to bite when I reach in there, so... Here's the money that I talked about in terms of pass-through funds, Adams County Open Space, Conservation Trust, Park Impact Fees, that's what's available for parks, trails, open space, about $13.4 million. So far, we've been using that money, particularly the Open Space and Conservation Trust funds, for capital maintenance and repair, replacement type of projects in the existing parks and trails, open space areas. So if we don't do that, and you want it shifted to new projects, then we have to figure out how we fund those projects, because, you know, playground equipment in parks wear out, you know, trails need to be occasionally replaced or upgraded, so those type of projects continue on. If we continue that practice, then we only have $6.3 million for new projects, and that's basically the Park Impact Fee money. For transportation, we have the Adams County Transportation Tax, $6.5, almost $6.6 million over 10 years, and then road impact fees estimated eight and a half, $8.6 million, solid waste management fees, $6.8, almost $6.9 million, for a total of $22 million. Now, just to put that into perspective, if you're building a four-lane road, that'll get you about two miles of road. So first question for you is, does council want to continue using Conservation Trust and open space funds for capital maintenance and replacement projects?
Is that a question? Yes. I mean, is that a good yes or no question for tonight?
Yes.
You want to start with Dominic?
Finish with him.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, I think it makes sense to continue.
Yes.
So where else would it come from?
So you're a yes? Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so then we're to $6.3 million to use on new projects, if you will, in parks and recreation. So then it comes down to a question, what projects do you want to fund with that $6.3 million? Are we ready for that? Okay. We have an exercise for you, and I'll defer to Ms. Halsted with that. Since we're dealing with an elephant, it does involve peanuts.
One of the ways we wanted to make sure that you could determine your baseline priorities is through peanuts. So we have a packet of peanuts for each of you. One peanut equals a million dollars, and white peanuts are money that's designated for open space, parks, recreation, and trails over the next 10 years, and orange peanuts are for road and transportation projects. And behind, most of you are to the left, are all the projects that Roger talked about. So what we'd like you to do is get up, stretch, and then take your peanuts and put them where you think your priorities are. And then once you're done, we'll add them up, and we'll see if those are indeed your priorities that you want to agree on for the next 10 years if there was no additional money.
The peanuts are not for dinner, Mr. Mayor.
No, and I don't know if I'd recommend eating them, but that's certainly your call. It just means you have less money. There are some extra. Get up and stretch, and then you can do your peanuts. next 10 years, and open space, open road project, also for golf courses. Correct, but if you want to try to round up, and again, put your peanuts... Well, I'm just thinking of the right place we get it, so...
What is this one on the phone?
That was the white one. Yeah. One of them.
I thought all of the ones were gone. Okay, this one is, uh, by. What is AV on AB?
You should open all yours.
Here Roger, AV on AB.
Hey, it's about five o'clock. We're just on the break. See the standards.
All right.
You know, the next thing is set on the move. I mean dinner? Are we there for a head? Do we have something for a half hour, 45 minutes we can do? That's what I mean. Let's keep rolling. So, that means we get out of here earlier too.
Oh, the snacks are already there by Jerry.
Jake, great truth.
So, has everybody made their priorities?
All except Dominic.
Okay. So, there's some snacks by Councilman Benson to eat. There's some peanuts to eat. So, Roger and I and Jason are going to add up your priorities and then we're going to talk about how we can make those happen.
I'll keep rolling.
Okay.
I would like to turn your attention to the list of projects over here. We've run through those earlier and I'll keep those up on this other screen. For these projects, we included basically business sheets in, in the booklet, in the three-ring binder that you received. I'd like to refer you to tab seven. Tab seven lists all of those project sheets and it gives basically the, the business case for each of those sheets. There was a request for estimating a return on investment, particularly like with the road projects. The difficulty with doing that is you have to make so many assumptions in terms of its impact on economic development. We tried that with 104th Avenue and then the economy tank. And, and so it's very difficult to say, well, you know, if we widen this road, we'll see so many new businesses move in because we tried that once with 104th and sort of got burned. So, that's the cautionary tale I would give you. It's a little difficult to give you a dollar impact in terms of this is the benefit. It's more in terms of safety improvement, traffic flow improvement, as well as potential for economic development. But it's, it's somewhat vague, if you will, in terms of that economic improvement that, that could occur from the project. So, I can walk through each of those projects individually or however you would like to review those. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, why don't we just, while the tallying is going on, can we just suggest that folks browse through those pages and raise any questions?
Okay.
That's fine. Tab seven are the, the project bios that we asked for. So, these are the capital projects in a pseudo-business case format. So, cost, benefit, but as Roger just said, they don't necessarily include, you know, a dollar benefit per se.
Well, I already have a question. Roger, on the outdoor aquatic facility, does the project cost, does that include the long-term maintenance of that facility? Or no, just the cost to build it?
That's the capital cost only.
Okay.
And that, just again, to bring everyone up to speed, that was a facility that was originally planned for Pioneer Park and was deferred because of funding commitments basically elsewhere.
So, the $217,000 that you list, that's what it would cost per year to maintain or?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We're just looking at these to pick whether we want them or not want them or what are you looking at?
These are gonna, these play a role in our overall discussion. We've had these listed as a line item in a number of PowerPoints this year.
Gotcha.
When we reviewed the long-range financial plan, the last time we got a big read back, we asked for information behind the line items. So, what were some of the costs? What were some of the operational considerations? How did it align with our goals? And so each of these were put together to help better frame those individual projects.
Okay.
And hopefully help us determine, take that into consideration when we start to determine priorities throughout this meeting.
Roger, again on the aquatic park, does that also factor in the cost of admission? That would people pay? No, it doesn't. So, any, that's not offset in the, the maintenance estimate?
We didn't project revenues. This was just identifying the O and M and it would revolve totally around fees and charges.
Sure.
And potentially concessions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And we never said for sure that there would even be a charge for admission on that depending on where it's at and things like that, right?
We never discussed fees and charges whatsoever.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
And this one's a challenge. $6 million for a three-month, for a three-month opening on a project. $217,000. I still think this is the, it's a much better boys and girls club than it is a three-month outdoor pool. Just doesn't make sense. Imagine what, how much of a boys and girls club you could build for $6 million?
But, but see, on the citizens survey, this is what they asked for. And I mean, it doesn't mean that we actually say, okay, we're going to do everything they asked for, but, no, no, I'm talking about the first citizen survey with Corona back in '06. When they, when we first did it, their first choice was an outdoor aqua facility up there in Pioneer Park.
But that's why, but, but I think to that point, sir, the, the reason that we do surveys over time is that thoughts change. Priorities change. So, what was important at one point may no longer be important. And I think what the most recent survey suggested was that especially due to the economic downturn, people's priorities had changed. They were much more focused on things that drove economic development or translated into job growth as opposed to, to that. I mean, recreation was, 2% of, of the respondents said that recreation was the most pressing issue. So, I mean, I'm just, to put it in context.
Okay.
I know it was, I know it was high.
I know, but I don't even think they asked for aqua facility on the survey this time. Go ahead, Dominic.
While it was listed as only 2% of the most pressing issue, Parks and Rec is still important to citizens. So, while they don't think it's the most pressing issue, it's still, still important.
So...
What's our plan now?
Well, I mean, on this list, as we go through it and look at the projects and what they're funding and maintenance, I guess we're supposed to, if we have any comments on different things like Dominic did on the aquatic facility, bring them up. If not, we're just basically waiting for them to go through the priorities and tell them what our priorities were. But I was kind of hoping we could keep moving on and go into something so we don't get behind.
Yeah.
Because I would rather be ahead at 7:30 than behind at 9:00.
Oh, okay.
I have a question about one of the projects.
Yes, ma'am.
Irrigation replacement buffalo run. Is it in very bad shape?
No, at this point, it's anticipated that by 2020, it will need to be replaced. However, again, that depends on condition assessment and that type of thing. But typically, an irrigation system has about, you know, a period, I'm looking for Parks and Recreation and Paul specifically, they, they have an estimated life and by 2020, it's going to be at the end of its estimated life. Doesn't mean necessarily it'll be shot, but probably would be, you know. So, again, we need to plan for it in case it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, just wanted to ask the council your thoughts. I mean, all of you guys know how much I want this boys and girls, girls club. So, where do you guys see it fitting in? How do you see it getting in? What are you guys' thoughts for getting that done? Because that, to me, is a really important project. And I'm not to say any of the rest of them are not important projects, but that's something that, you know, I mean, the Kearney site is doing very well with the limited amount of space that they have, but they're gonna, they have already outgrown it ages ago.
About what? No, but if we put the Boys and Girls Club on Pioneer Park?
Oh, right. Four.
I don't see the Boys and Girls Club on Pioneer Park. And I'm, I'm going to explain to you why. My view, just my view. A Boys and Girls Club needs facilities because they run baseball teams, softball teams, they run football teams and everything like that.
I didn't say Pioneer Park.
I know. Okay. But see, somebody said a baseball, a Boys and Girls Club on Pioneer Park.
That was me.
Oh, okay. I was just being the devil's advocate to Pioneer Park. I don't want to see a Boys and Girls Club taking over Pioneer Park at expense of our own recreation programs.
Well, I personally think Freedom Park is a good, the one right next to the church, I think is a good location. It's one that we've discussed at the stakeholders meeting. So, just something to think about.
Okay, Freedom up on 64th and?
Yes, on 64th and Olive, right there. That space, that, that land that's at the park that's right next to it? I think that personally, I think that would be a great place and a great choice for where to put it. And Ms. and I have been involved with the stakeholders and I could defer to him for the latest thoughts on what they're thinking, but I personally think that's a good location. Ms.?
Ms. Teeter?
I have another question. It's about Northern Range Police Substation. Is the current satellite station there, it's not going to be large enough in 10 years? Chief, would you want to discuss this, please?
Sure. No, it's not going to be big enough. Secondly, it's on a lease. That is very temporary. Doesn't, doesn't belong to us. Belongs to shared, shared properties. They could take it back, you know, in a very short period of time.
And what new services or how advantageous would this new one be? If you could explain this?
Sure. I mean, I anticipate working closely with at least the fire department. That would cut our costs in half, sharing expenses for architects and land acquisition and everything else. I mean, it's silly not to, but at least with the fire department. We need a full-service facility. We need to have a secure parking lot for, for equipment, for automobiles. We need to have a secure location to hold prisoners and we need more space. Right now, it's 1,300 square feet. It's just, it, it's okay and it's a first step, but that's exactly what it is. But long range, I don't anticipate we'll be able to keep it. And there's not much other space available right now at this point.
Well, I agree with everything you just said. That's why I wanted you to share that with everyone here. Thank you.
Carolyn, I have a question for you. Am I on? I guess.
Closer.
Take it off. On the renovation for the current Reg Center. There's nothing on here that shows a family community room of any kind. I do know there's an issue if, we as mothers are very used to taking our children into the female locker rooms, female restrooms. It seems to be a problem when fathers have their young daughters and they are using the men's facilities. Is there any way we can put something like that on there? This, this family locker room?
Actually, on the program sheet for the Commerce City Recreation Center renovation, the family locker room, that's, that's what that would be.
I didn't see it. Is it, so, but it is on here?
Yes, that would be part of the renovation. Towards the middle, the project name is Commerce City Recreation Center.
JD, are you looking at the one that says Commerce City Recreation? And it should be about the third thing, fourth thing down.
Under the project description.
Got it. Okay.
We would totally agree with you.
Okay. Thank you.
I saw that problem come up a couple of weekends ago where the dad didn't want to take the daughters in the men's locker room and he didn't want them to walk into the women's locker room alone. So, he just stood there in the hallway and he was confused. And I think he finally just went home because he didn't know what to do, you know? I can, oh, it was a big issue.
Mayor, to respond to Mayor Potem Snyder's question about the Boys and Girls Club site, we, we looked, the stakeholder group that council directed has met and looked at several sites, including the site that Mayor, Mayor Potem just mentioned on 64th and Olive. And we are putting together a presentation and a recommendation that will be brought to council for your consideration at a, at a future date. It's likely August, yeah. You're welcome.
Roger or Greg, a quick question about the MSC expansion. Are we currently at capacity with the facility that's there now? How immediate is that?
Council, 1A defines some facilities that were cut from the original construction in 1997 because of budget. So, all of those facilities could have been used the last 13 years. So, most of that is behind the times.
Greg, can you talk into the mic, please? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Whoops. So, we're, on 1A, that's late essentially. There are other phases past the ones that you see in this list that are shown after the 10-year timeframe that would provide office space for parks, employees and that sort of thing. But these, the first one, 1A, is things that were cut from the original construction.
Thank you.
Uh, Greg, following up on that question, it says design 12 months and then the construction 12 to 18 months. The things that were cut in the original construction, are they already in the design or would this have to be a completely new design?
That assumes design of those facilities. The high-pressure wash facility is probably the one that would take the most time. And what we're talking about there is once you have identified the funding for it, you got to go to bid on the, the design and that includes all of that process. So, it's probably less than the 12 months, but it's a, a process.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question for Carolyn. Carolyn, at the opening of the... Carolyn, at the opening of the Wildlife Refuge Visitor Center, Secretary Salazar mentioned that the Northeast Denver Corridor would be part of his proposal for the Great Outdoors Colorado and some of the money coming in for that. Is there a possibility that we can leverage some of the, we could possibly obtain some of those funds to offset some of the costs of our Parks and Trail system?
Ms. is looking at me. My understanding is it wouldn't address our loop trails. That's not part of that plan, but Ms., do you want to go ahead?
Councilor Moreno, the, the funds that are being allocated to connect the trails as part of that project is, at least the ones that are, Commerce City is part of, are coming from leftover funds from a grant that the Fish and Wildlife Service received and they're being controlled by?
St. Creek.
St. Creek, that's right. And so it's all going to be passed through to us just for the specific parts of the trail that belong to us.
Great. So, but none of our, our projects coincide with what they're planning to do?
None of our projects listed in our list here with the Long Range Financial Plan are addressed through Mr. Salazar's plan.
Okay, thank you.
But it could be. I can make it work. Especially when it is not money. Because to get over to Rocky Flats.
Yeah. Roger, back to you.
To get over the St. Creek.
What we'll be doing later is using keypad polling to give you an opportunity to priority rank these projects beyond what is already committed in terms of the peanut exercise that we just went through. So basically, what we're trying to do is give you ample time to discuss these projects and ask questions about them so that you can do a priority ranking on these, which will occur after dinner if we get our tally here pretty soon. We're good? All right, okay.
I have one more question for Carolyn. Some of the projects listed, for example, the villages at Buffalo Run East Neighborhood Park and a few others, are, are there currently parks that are administered or funded by like the HOA that those neighborhoods currently take advantage of? Or would this be the first park in that area? Could you provide that a little context?
There's nothing in Buffalo Run East.
Okay.
But in some cases, in some of these areas, yes. So we could certainly identify by, you know, area.
For example, that we have a, a project for Potomac and Turnberry Neighborhood Park. Do those neighborhoods have a park currently or?
HOA owned, yes.
HOA owned, okay, thank you.
I have a question. When we're looking at the Northern Range Rec Center and multipurpose rooms, would those be big enough to accommodate any of the, well, where'd it go, the police substations? Could we incorporate any of that into a building?
Well, the chief certainly isn't here. The substation would require dedicated space. Our multipurpose use rooms in a recreation center are similar to the multipurpose rooms that we have at our recreation center now where we hold things like birthday lunch and other activities. So the use of those rooms is constantly fluid based on the activity. The substation is going to need designated space that you wouldn't be able to necessarily use for other.
Right. I guess I was just wondering if you could enhance upon a rec center to, go ahead, Jerry.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I think, I think I understand what you're saying. And as, as the chief did mention, co-locating with another jurisdiction or like departments in the city would be good. I've, I've been in jurisdictions where they do co-locate a number of different departments. Obviously, you wouldn't want to mix the two, but you could have them in different wings, kind of like what we have with the Civic Center. So you could, you could separate the two. But our goal would be to lessen the impact when we build a, a significant facility in looking at any type of jurisdiction. Maybe the water district might want to have a satellite up north. They already have some facilities. But maybe the libraries or maybe there's a post office component or something. I, I don't know how those would really mesh, but the idea is to look as, as many of those to save the money and then, and then actually do a plan based on multi-location.
And, and what if you did a partnership with the city of Brighton? Have we looked into anything like that?
The, the discussion has come up. There are some challenges with that, not insurmountable, but I think it's just been an appetite, I think in both sides, to, to co-locate something like that. We have talked about it with the school districts in some cases where there, like a, a gas facility or a propane, not propane, I'm sorry, natural gas, you know, outlets, you know, co-locating those because each jurisdiction, if they did their own, it would make sense if they coordinated to actually locate those facilities so they weren't all duplicating facilities in the same proximity.
Right, and with the new Adams Crossing there, there might be a, a large use in the afternoon or something by employees or something.
Could be, could be.
Hello, Mark?
Yes, I have a question for somebody in Parks or maybe Buffalo Run. How badly needed is a pond liner is? How crucial, how important and also what kind of equipment needs to be replaced?
Kathy, or Councilman Teeter, the equipment is a comprehensive list of all equipment at Buffalo Run. And we're in the process of replacing some of that equipment currently. Annually, we're evaluating the need for replacement, so that's an ongoing, multi-year type project. With the pond liners, we've estimated a life at this point. They're solid. We, we don't have any concerns with them. But like the irrigation, as Roger touched on a little bit earlier, we were estimating the replacement based on the manufacturer guidelines for life of the pond liner. So that's why that's in this at this point.
Another question for you, Carolyn. In the project on the renovations of the recreation center, do you, I imagine more space would be needed to be added to accommodate some of the projects listed. Do you know which way you'd expand on the current site or would that be something that you're leaving to the design process?
We've actually already looked at the potential and we have some conceptual design with these, with the proposed renovation that we did a few years back. With the, the pool, there before, we would be going to the, if I get my directions correct, south of where the slide is currently.
Okay.
With some of the expanded space related to locker rooms and additional program space, we'd be going, pushing to the east. And certainly, at some point, we have been working with the residents there. We have one additional property we would hope to at some point acquire, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be critical to some of these renovations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? We do have Roger Scott on the screen, the tallies of your peanut project. I'm going to just read the top three for Parks, Trails and Open Space. A rec center received 29 peanuts, loop and Neighborhood Connections 19, and then Fairfax Drainage and Irrigation was 16, and then the rest were in the single digits. When you look at transportation projects, Tower Road clearly broke on the wall and it is your top priority, followed by 96th Avenue A, 96th Avenue B, 56th Avenue and then 96th Avenue C. And if you look at your priorities and your projects, all of those rankings, even your top ones, exceed the amount of money that you would have over the next 10 years. So I'm going to turn it over to Roger to start the dialogue and prioritization, assuming that we had no money, no additional money, rather, over the next 10 years.
So the first part is, given existing money, what would we focus on? You know, then follows later, okay, if we have additional money, you know, from some various funding sources, then what do we fund? So first part of it is, assuming there's no new money, then what do we do? Tower Road by itself will take more than the 22 million that's available to us. So we would need to supplement it, and it would not leave anything for any of the other projects. So I guess the first question is, is that what you would want us to focus on, given no new money?
Okay. And I didn't think about this when we were doing it, but I am now. What happens, I think, is one of us or two of us threw everything into one project, which out of a group of nine is only two of nine. And it's not actually, I'm having a problem justifying this. Can you help me with that? Because I think that's probably what happened when I look at that. I'm looking at it and I said, well, I had 28. If I, if two people threw them all in, that's still just two of the nine of us, though it got the top ranking.
Understood. Yes, that could happen.
No, yeah, we were told we could do it, but it's not giving us, because I'm sitting up here saying, wow, 56th Tower Road, and for me, that wasn't, it was probably in my top five. It certainly wasn't my top one.
Well, I, I think, Mr. Mayor, the intent of the peanut exercise is to basically allow this discussion to happen. So it allows you to do it in a more concrete manner.
Right. Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could mention, with these types of exercises, I think one of the first things you need to do is obviously identify what your top priority is. And that's almost, in some ways, for planning purposes, regardless of money. And then, and then the discussion that occurs right now is where you say, okay, now we realize that all of our money in one project, do we want all of it to go in one project or do we want to spread it out over two or three projects? That's where this discussion occurs. And then the matter of how you fund it is the other question. And as Roger framed it, this is without any new revenue sources. So, so if you're looking at opportunity costs, so to speak, then we can cinch our belts up and say, for this year, we can take a timeout and know that these are our priorities and maybe in the next year, work towards getting, financing, work towards securing federal dollars, whatever kind of mechanisms we can find money through. Or we can say, there may be something that we need to implement as a new revenue source to offset some of these costs.
I have a question. Public safety to me, chief, is, is the utmost priority. Why was it not up there? And I know that we don't have the funds for it, but we didn't have funds for Tower Road either. Can someone share that with me, please?
Public safety bag was on the floor, face down.
Oh, no. Well...
Yes, it was, I'm not kidding. I'm sorry, I didn't see it till the very end, but it was on the floor, face down.
Well, we need to have a different vote on that.
Well, the reason for, come down, please. The reason for that is we're talking only the available funding sources that we have right now. So the funding sources aren't available for public safety. They're not available for Boys and Girls Club. You know, they're not available for a number of projects, knowing that council has other priorities. So we're only talking about these existing funding sources. So when we talk about the Adams County Transportation Tax Money, for example, it may only be used on transportation projects, so road improvements. That's all it can be used for. It cannot be used for facilities, cannot be used for other purposes. Same thing with lottery funds and Adams County open space money. Those may only be used on open space parks, trails type of projects. Can't be used somewhere else. So, so that's the, the reason for you only had a narrow set of projects to choose from because that's all that money can be used for. So nothing devious was intended. The bag was on the floor, that's all I know. It was the truth. But back to your point, Mr. Mayor, you're absolutely right. The results can be skewed by one or two council members saying, I'm throwing everything into that project. So that's why, as Ms. Hall said, stated earlier, we need your feedback. Is, is that truly what you see as the priorities as a body? You know, again, we take our direction from you sitting as a body, not individual council members, so we need your direction in terms of how do you want us to spend that existing money?
Just for clarification's sake, the, the peanut voting was an exercise in brainstorming, not an exercise aimed at providing final prioritization.
Right.
So just to be clear, it's, it's illustrative of the challenge that we have with the funds that we have. We're going to have a, we're going to, I would assume, have subsequent discussion on how we truly set that priority. Does that make sense, guys?
Yes.
Okay.
And we knew in the beginning we didn't have the money, but if we had the money, this is how we would like to do it. Yes. And we will have the money in the future. We just don't know where.
So prior to dinner, if you may indulge Mr. Tinklinburg and I, perhaps we could have the discussion on what would your priorities be if there was no additional resources in the next 10 years, based on this list and based on this prioritization? And then after dinner, we will talk about if you were to raise revenues, how, how or what would that result in? Or not, it's at your discretion.
Okay. I've got a list. I looked at the, I looked at each of the business cases and I weighed those items that had some time-bound factor to them, like the MSC needs to have on by 2015. Or I looked at road increments that to me have economic development value. If we were to improve capacity or flow through a certain segment, is it going to help promote growth in that area? And then I looked at things on some of the Parks and Recs items as an example, where the item suggests that if we invest, you know, let's say a million dollars now, we buy 10 to 15 years of lower or lessened maintenance or concern or risk of loss. So looking at things that if we took our near-term available capital and said, let's do these things as sort of levers to either set aside and sort of reduce risk on the Parks and Maintenance side or, again, help solve some of our key traffic or, or other transportation issues. And so I'll, I'll throw out my list and then people can poke holes. I had Tower on the list. I had MSC 1A. I had equipment replacement for 1.1 million. I had irrigation for two. I had the pond liners for 0.75 million. I had 72nd for 3.1 million. I had 96th Avenue A, Segment A, for 8.5. I had 74th and Colorado for 11.8. And by the way, 72nd and 74th and Colorado, to me, were all economic development impetus because of future light rail station and potential to spur redevelopment in that area. And then obviously, the, the Rosemary expansion between 80th and 88th because, again, I think improving movement through there would be helpful to development in that area. So I didn't tally the numbers, I just sort of did a quick look of things that seemed to me to make sense to sort of float to the top of the list. Not that they're the ones that I most want, but that spread the money reasonably wide and had the most likelihood of impact, beneficial impact, if that makes sense.
I was one of the ones that skewed the vote because I dumped all my eggs in one basket, under the belief that I supported the Northern Range Rec Center. Because the cost that's projected to build it today, how much does that go up in five years, 10 years? We already, if I'm understanding, the connecting parks and the, the trails and stuff, that cannot go up in price compared to buying land and building a building, am I correct? Jerry, I'm looking at you.
Certainly, I think the construction costs of a facility traditionally go up higher. In the last few years, they've kind of inclined at a much slower rate because of the, because of the industry. And I, I think, you know, maybe Carolyn or, or Mike may have a better feel for specifically what the costs are.
what the costs are compared to how they, how they increase. But I would guess that a facility would increase more percentage-wise than a, than a trail.
And, and I dumped them all in Tower Road for the belief that if we are looking to the future and bringing the future growth, Tower Road is a very important road to us. And I feel we just need to get, you know, it's kind of that thing when you, you're looking at your own home, and do you paint this room and put new drapes in that room and re-carpet the stairs? Or do you say, "Let's go in one room and let's revamp the whole thing and be done with it?" And I would like to see us do some things that the citizens out there feel a huge impact that it happened, it's done, and I mean, it's, it's a big deal. It's out there for them to see. Instead of sometimes when you spread your money all around and you do the projects I know that we do need to do, I mean, that all those roads are very important, do citizens feel as much of it, so...
Ms. Peter?
Okay, I have mine. My number one was Tower Road, which we know we can't afford it completely right now. The, all three requests from Buffalo Run, the equipment, the pond lining, and the irrigation. The improvements on 72nd Avenue and Colorado Boulevard, Highway 85 there. The MSC 1A, and the rec center out north.
Somebody else have a list? Or some ideas?
I, I do, but there is one on our list of descriptions, there is nothing in our description of price for loops and neighborhood trails down here. And I keep wondering, what is that going to cost? Because in the park and recreations, that was my number one. So, I'm trying, does anybody have?
Loops and trails in the north? Or you said down here?
Well, it said loops, we have, on the bags, we have two. It had loops and neighborhood connections, which is the fourth one down up there.
Mm-hmm.
And then loops, trails north of 96.
Sure.
I'm thinking of the loops and neighborhood connections down here. Wasn't that down here?
No.
Oh.
That's your, the trails north range?
So, what is loops, trails north of 96 Avenue?
It's our Second Creek to the O'Brien, from Bar Lake to 96, which then links to the Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge. And it creates a triangle up there in which the neighborhoods can then connect out to from the various trails.
Okay, then, I'm a little bit confused, because it says Second Creek Trails, loops and trails north of 96, and loops and neighborhood connections. Loops and neighborhood connections for 588,000, that's up north.
And those were all combined together in the project sheet that says Trails Northern Range?
Okay.
And it's a total of 15,941 when you start adding all of those pieces, all of those pieces up?
Okay. Okay, well, as far as road projects go, I just did three right off the bat, because we don't have money for them anyway. Tower Road was my first one, because Tower Road is going to be a major economic engine in the future up there. And if we don't improve it, our engine's going to stop right north of Pena Boulevard if we don't do something. My second was the 96 Avenue B, which is the grade separation. In my opinion, and just my opinion, grade separation needs to go in, so we know, don't fix the road if we aren't going to have grade separation. I would like to see the grade separation, then we know the rest of the road's going to come along. And the 72nd Avenue, because 72nd with our metro stop with, is going to be an economic engine down here. And so, I'm thinking that if we don't take care of our engines, we're basically sunk. Yes, you know, it stops. Loops and neighborhood trails, that 15 million dollars that you said, let's go with that. And Recreation Center North and Recreation Center South. Let's keep our amenities for our residents going. And I, we definitely need, and it's long-range, because we already have it here, but we definitely need to upgrade the Recreation Center down here. But at least we have a Recreation Center down here. We need a Recreation Center up north. And I've heard a lot of people say, "Well, no, we don't, but yes, we do." Because a lot of people up north, that's what they're saying. They don't feel any unity to Reunion, so, and Reunion doesn't feel any unity to them, because that's a Metro District Recreation Center, even though we do programs there. Bell Creek is Bell Creek, even though we do programs there. People that are in between the two feel like they don't have anything, so they definitely want a Recreation Center. Those are my three of my priority lists.
In the development of my priorities, I looked at things that are immediate, things that need to be funded now. That's why loops and neighborhood connections got my top vote, is because the outlook in terms of the timeline is 2011, 2012. And it's something that's a relatively low expenditure, that can be done immediately. And the residents can see the effects of it immediately. They can see their tax dollars at work. That's why I'd say, the reason why I didn't give much preference to a Northern Range Rec Center is not because I don't think it's necessary. I do think it's necessary. I think it's more long-term. If you look at it in the Parks and Rec project list, it's the most expensive out of all of them. And so, I would like to see us use our money very judiciously, very wisely, and look at things that we can make real progress on now, while looking at ways to raise revenue for those future big projects.
What about your road projects?
Road, that's where my logic went out the window, and I was like, "Tower Road." Because, you know, it's expensive, yes, but it is such a crucial corridor in the city. And if we can, I don't know, I didn't follow my own logic when it came to transportation, but I, I think Tower Road is really important, so I gave a lot of preference to that. I gave some preference to 96th Avenue. But in all the transportation projects, we're literally playing with peanuts. We don't have the money to do them, so it's okay to say, "What's your, what's your hope? What's your, you know, your pipe dream?" And put it to that, so...
I'll start with my Parks and Open Space. Of course, the rec center...
Talking into the mic, Jim.
I am talking into the mic. I can't get much closer to it. The new rec center up north was my preference. The only people up north who don't want a rec center are those who live in Reunion, because we already have our own rec center. We pay a lot of money for it. But that's something that sorely needed up there. I understand that it's 19 and a half million dollars. It's slated here for 2015. I would be very pleased if we had a rec center up there by 2015. The villages at Buffalo Run East Neighborhood Park. The loop trails north of 96th, and the O'Brien Canal Trail from Outlook to 96th. And I also was asking Mr. Tinklinburg about a trail, and I'll ask you, Carolyn, a trail going down 104th that connects all of our trails to the Platte River. Because once you get to the Platte River Trail, you're connected to 300 miles of hard-surface trails in the Denver Metro area. All the way, you can drive it all the way down to Chatfield Reservoir, Cherry Creek Reservoir, without ever getting out on the road. Getting over to the Platte River Trail, I think, should be the number-one priority. And then we fill in the gaps in our neighborhoods with the trails. But just, we need, we need a place where we can get over to the Platte River Trail without riding our bikes out on 104th with all the traffic, especially at night. On the roadways, obviously, Tower Road, number one, for the same reasons that everybody else has stated. That's the key to our economic development on that side of town. It, when you pass Pena Boulevard, going north on Tower Road, it's like a wasteland. There's nothing there except the two parking areas. Then you see the landfill. There's just nothing out there. There's no lights. There's nothing. And that's, it's got to be developed with the infrastructure. And through, it seems to me like the land developers out there should be willing to form a new GID or a Metro District, as you've stated here. They have a lot to gain by the development of that area. They ought to be willing to chip in something, maybe use their credit to form a new GID. The 96th Avenue A, which is, I understand, is from I-76 over to Highway 2. Is that right? A is 96 over to Highway 2?
I think A is Buckley Road to Tower Connection.
Okay, well, I voted for that one, too. What is C?
That's the roadway improvements from I-76 to connect to what we're building now at Highway 2.
Okay, I voted for that one, too. I didn't vote for the grade crossing. And I, I understand that when you're going to cross the UP track, those trains are generally moving at about 20 miles an hour. And if we're going to have a grade crossing, it probably needs to be on the UP track. At least the Burlington Northern are going at about 70 miles an hour.
A brief comment to that, that, when, when that enclave was annexed, the property owners along 96th, that was their top priority, was for that...
Yeah.
...overpass of the, to get that separation, so they'd have traffic access.
21 and a half million dollars.
Right. They're all expensive.
Maybe they need to form their own GID to get that going.
Totally agree.
All right. And that's it. I mean, most of mine went to Tower Road, because that's got, that's got to be, I thought four or five years ago, that Highway 2 should be the number-one priority. But that's not where our economic development's going to occur. It's going to occur out on Tower Road. And that's what, that's what we have to support, I think. That's it.
So, observation, we're all over the place.
We really are.
We, we are and we aren't. How do we, what, where from here? And I don't want to take over facilitation, but I guess the challenge here is, we've, we've done a first blush look over these lists. I mean, selfishly, there's more data that I would like to see on these to make more fact-based decisions. I'm certainly not leaning toward an ability to make any final call or, or statement tonight based on what we're seeing today. I think, I think additional information would help many of us shift our thinking, and that, like, me included. And so, I know Roger talked about the fact that building a, a return on investment, per se, is not necessarily a realistic ask. I do think that there are, even if we were just to brainstorm collectively on each of these, not in a priority sense, but look at each of these items and think about, just as sort of some of us spoke here, how these projects would impact the community. And essentially, look at how those add up to say, "Oh, you know what? Yeah, I didn't think about that piece when I was thinking about my prioritization, but somebody else adds it in, and it could cause a, a big shift in how you're thinking." I think Dominic had some great points about the need to balance sort of the visible with the long-term. It's easy to say that we want the big sexy projects, but the reality to me is, you've got to, you've got to strike a balance. You've got to deliver some level of visible return on the taxpayer dollar. And then you've also got to solve for the longer-term strategic imperatives, the things that have to ultimately happen, like Tower Road, like Highway 2 someday, like 685 someday. So, how do you, how do you strike that balance? And obviously, what we've taken into consideration at this point in the discussion is the fact that we don't have dollars to do it all. And so, our, the guidance, and I think we heard from Mr. Tinklinburg out of the gate, was, "Within the next 10 years, with the money you have, what would you do?" And I look at, I look at where we sit today as a community, and many of the advantages that we had five years ago, 10 years ago, before the downturn, aren't as great an advantage any longer, right? We're no longer the cheapest place to buy. The playing field has been leveled. So, what are the, what are the key hurdles that we could solve for in that 10-year window with the dollars that we have, that would act as a game changer or help shift things so that we do see momentum return? And I think it does have to include, as we've all sort of touched on, a balance between amenity and sort of infrastructure. But how do we take the discussion into that sort of next layer? I mean, does that make sense, or am I the only one sort of scratching my head and pondering at that point?
Oh, okay. Well, as we look at it, and then I looked at page 38 and 39, I mean, 39 and 40 in Tab 2 of potential funding sources in the future. You know, I mean, we started this whole exercise on, "We don't have money to do these, but if we did, what would your choices be?"
Right.
And so, then we say, "Okay, we don't..."
You can't use them.
"...but let's look at what potential funding sources we have in the future, because we do have a potential." So, after we do the first exercise and we get by, if we say, "Okay, we have a funding source of so many million dollars for 10 years in the future, and it could fund two projects." And we look at these funding sources, what would be everybody's, I guess the next exercise is, is when you look at potential funding sources, what would be your choices on, okay, I'm going to defer to Dominic, because he stopped me right there.
No, I, I think you bring up a great point. But I think it's also good to force ourselves to look at prioritizing projects when money isn't there, when the possibility for new revenue isn't there. Then we really get at the heart of what we feel needs to happen now, rather than just saying, "Well, we could potentially have this come in, so let's think grander than that." I really think we should force ourselves to concentrate on what we can do if no money is available. Because then, I, I really do think we get at the heart of the issue.
So, we're going to basically narrow it down to one or two projects and say, "We, if no money is available, and these are the sources..."
No new money.
"...no new money, and these are the sources we have. We only have maybe one recreation project and one road project. We need to prioritize down to that between the nine of us."
I think, yeah, we need to force ourselves to do that.
So, I think the, the exercise really is to identify what projects are your top priorities. When you do a capital improvement program or a community improvement plan, you identify what your needs are, what your desires are as a political body, but also what you think will best serve the public. And so, when you, when you sit down, I think money should not be a part of that discussion. Because let's say, let's say you go along with Dominic's outline of the, the trails and loops as a project that you can do now with a certain cost, but the real desire is to build Tower Road or the on-ramp at Tower and Pena, or a rec center up north. Well, I think you can say that this is where we want to shoot, and then what we'll try to do as staff is, is try to figure out ideas to address what those things are. If we know where you want to go, we will do whatever we can. Now, there are limits to that. But for example, you'll, you'll see after, after dinner, I think, some of the discussion's going to be for Tower... going to be for Tower, a GID, as you mentioned, Jim, whether or not we can leverage United Power to float bonds where the landowners put their land up for collateral to kind of afford that expenditure so that we can build that road. It's, it's a partnership that we would look at, not just specifically us taking our bonding capacity, which is fairly limited, and saying, here, we're gonna go build this road. So I think the first, the first set of tasks, I think, with this is having this discussion, having you have this debate, if you will, to say, these are our top priorities, this is where we wanna spend our, our resources. If we don't have money, this is where we wanna, this is where we'd like to spend it. And then we can come back and figure out where we wanna target it and how we, how we target that. And I don't think it has to necessarily be one project, because you may have several, as I mentioned before, that are lower, I hate using the term, but lower hanging fruit that you can use to leverage your, your revenues to have four or five projects rather than one big one. But maybe that one big one, we come back and say, this is how we wanna attack it, and then come back to you. Whether it's, let's say it's Highway 2, you know, meeting down at the state, having a full-blown discussion, maybe we can get some revenue out of the state that will help maintain that road. But, but I think it's a matter of having the discussion now and, and really kind of getting into what are your top priorities, and then we can take that, take those orders and march down the road.
Okay. Ms. Dieter and then Mr. Benson.
Jerry, I couldn't agree with you more. Back when Stephanie Salazar was our ED Director, she was asking about Tower Road being built, but we've never had the money, so it's not even a discussion topic. And if we keep putting off and putting it off, we, we, we need to let everyone know here that that is our number one priority. And we can't talk about it because we don't have the money, and this has happened repeatedly, so.
Well, based on your retreat in March, we took those, the, the direction of, of council very, very clearly, and you can ask staff when you have moments with them, that this is a major focus of where we wanna go as far as looking at Tower Road. We don't necessarily say you have the funds right now to do it, but we, we from, from your retreat in March have said, this is a major focus. We're outreach to the different entities. We're having conversations with the landowners to actually see how we can leverage their, their worth as well as the utilities' worth, as well as the city's, to try to get that done. So it is a priority for us, and I don't, I don't see that changing here, but I think when you wanna look at how you fund specific projects, the question I think that Roger's asking you is, how do you, how do you wanna prioritize these projects if you didn't have money? I think that's part of the exercise, and then we get to the next level of saying, if you did have revenue streams, then what would you want?
Okay. And I also wanted to add, the reason I added all three projects for Buffalo Run, people go there and they pay top dollar. I mean, $70 for a round of golf, and if all of these improvements do not take place, it's gonna corrode. And that was my reasoning for that.
Okay. Mr. Benson and Ms. Carson.
Who on the staff is in charge of leverage financing? Is it a combination of?
Leverage financing. Define that term.
Using our leverage to get a lot of money where we have a little to put up.
I think it's a team effort that I would lead.
All right.
And we have been, we have been leveraging that as much as we can.
All right. But it seems like we need to do some work on that, because that's just the way things get done.
No, we don't. There is interest out there.
Right. Ms. Carson and then Mr. Butler.
Well, Jerry, I was really glad to hear you say that, because one of the things that I did learn at the NLC was we were told, you better start thinking outside the box, you better start figuring out different ways to get things done, and you better start building partnerships everywhere you go to get this done. If we, like Kathy said, if we keep setting back and saying, oh, we really need this, but we can't afford it, when do you ever, when do you ever set your goals out there? This is what we need, and we're gonna go get it. And, and I believe we'll be successful. I believe, as you said with Tower Road, you can find other people to come into that, offset that money, and then all of a sudden, we have the money. But if you never put your goal there, how do you, how are you ever gonna get it?
That's exactly right.
If we tell you to build us a north rec center and you say we don't have the money, well, if, I don't know, I'm speculating that Brighton's new growth all goes to the south. Then do we start building those partnerships because they can't afford it, we can't afford it, and that's how we learn to do things together? Because the old ways are old ways and they need to go away. And we need to build these and, and just go forward. And, and yeah, I'm not gonna sit here and, and pick things that, well, I can afford that and I can afford this. It's like saying to your children, well, don't ever try to go out and get something better. So thank you for saying what you said.
Mr. Butler?
Okay. I am so glad that he said that too, because I think the number one diamond asset we have in this city right now is the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge. And if we don't think of Highway 2 as a priority to bring people to it, Tower Road is an economic engine, but they expect to have 200,000 people visit the Rocky Mountain Wildlife Refuge this year. Less marketed as Commerce City's Wildlife Refuge, because everything that goes into it now is going into it from Commerce City. The Havana Street exit is only used for deliveries and stuff. They have to come up right next to our City Hall and then turn left. So if we aren't gonna market this as the image changer for the Rocky Mountain Refuge and how it, then Highway 2 has gotta be a priority. And if it's not gonna be a priority, if we can't think bigger than this, then we're denying ourselves. If Tower Road's a priority, then Highway 2 has gotta be also a priority, and we've got to do something with it in order to make it. And whether or not you know it, west of Highway 2 is an economic engine for industry. And if you aren't looking at it, and I don't know why Jim said Tower Road and Highway 2 isn't, but Highway 2 brings in more bucks to us than, and I know, I'm not disputing this with you, Jim, I don't wanna get into conflict, but it, it is an economic engine on this side of town.
About an hour ago, I asked Roger where Highway 2 would be on this list if we had control of it. The thing is, we, we can't do much with it because we don't have control of it. That's why we need to get it from.
Well, and you know, I would say you're really, you, in that case, you're talking to apples and oranges. And I say that only because you have a road that's in the city that needs to be improved, and so that is absolutely on the target screen to fund. You have another one that is not in our jurisdiction as far as ownership, that we, we have that right of way, but, but it, to bring it in, we would need a decent, significant amount of money from CDOT to bring that in. That is a future agenda item, in my opinion, that we would come back to you after discussions with CDOT to say, here's how we would go about it, and here's a negotiation of bringing it in. Because the city's already put a million bucks into that road when it's not even in the jurisdiction of the city with the lights. So, you know, the road itself, it's debatable what state it's in, but they, the CDOT would only give us money to maintain that probably over a 20-year period, and I'm sure it wouldn't be enough to cover that timeframe. So we are talking different things, but I think knowing it's on your screen is something that we can come back to you with. But I think it, it may, if we go too much into that, it, it could take away a little bit from the, the, the major components that we're here to talk about.
Are we someplace close to a break-in point or?
Yes. Dinner is ready. Just to recap, from what I'm hearing, I think, I thought, I heard, Tower Road with the existing money? Is that true? I'm seeing some nods.
Just to play devil's advocate for a second, here's where it gets challenging. We sit here and we say Tower with the existing money, yet we also, in the same discussion here, that there are potential, there's a potential to fund it through another manner altogether. So I'm trying to weigh and trying to understand, if we're getting to an end planning goal, let's just, let's just cut to the chase for a second, for discussion's sake. If at the end of the day, we decide that we don't have enough to do all of the things that we wanna do, and we think that there are some ways to raise revenue on the other side of that, well, what are the ways that we think we can raise revenue? And how do those align to projects that we think we can actually get the, the revenue measure to pass? Let's say it's a voter item. Do you go to a vote on Tower Road where it's likely to pass with the folks that are most impacted, or do you go to the vote on things that are gonna be less palatable? So I guess, I'm just trying to gauge, when we say, what are we gonna take out of existing monies? Do you potentially use those to fund projects that are less likely to have alternative funding available if you go after it? Does that make sense?
It does. Basically, what we're trying to understand is if there are no new revenues.
Period.
Period. Then what do you want us to focus on? You're right. I mean, there's a follow-up conversation after dinner, and that is, okay, what are the overall ranking of priorities, assuming that there's gonna be new revenue, and then what new revenues are you willing to consider so that we can fund those projects and we can determine how far down the list we can go with the funding?
I think part of it, though, also, you know, even with those alternative funding mechanisms, we're still looking at millions of dollars of contribution to it. So knowing that it's your top priority doesn't absolve us to say, well, we found a new way of funding it because we're probably gonna have to match it somehow anyway, so it'll still be there. Just like with the, the, the police facility and combining it, we would try to partner it to, we're still gonna owe a chunk of money, but not as much as we once owed in the original estimate.
And see, I guess that's where I was getting ahead of myself before when I was saying, look at 39 and 40 at potential sources. This is an after-dinner discussion. We were talking about no new funding. Now, there is opportunities for different funding, but I will wait till after dinner to start to bring that conversation into play.
So going back to the original question, no new money, what should we focus on? Is it Tower Road?
I like Tower Road.
I'm reading nods.
Yes.
Okay. And then how about on the Parks Trails Open Space side? Are we talking trails?
Loopes and neighborhood trails. That's my choice.
And.
Okay.
To a, to a degree. This would be your point.
Okay, I'm hearing different things on Parks Trails Open Space. Do you wanna defer till after dinner and?
Yes.
Think it over? Okay. Let's break for dinner then, with your permission, Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Hey, you asked for it.
I'm sitting here like, this is the first time I'm reading these projects.
What?
I don't even know these projects are going on. I'm like, correlate it with citizen feedback.
I know. Yeah.
At least give me the binder and the bags, you know?
Now you got it. You can look at it.
Yes, exactly.
Study it.
It's my dinner.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna do it. They're already pissed off. They're already pissed off. We didn't do a very good job.
There's a conspiracy between communications and finance. The bag was on the floor, turned upside down. I was horsing around, disregard the last message.
I was horsing around, disregard the last message.[258.87]
The time we get down to September, that gap is zero or balanced or 200,000, 500,000, something within manageable range that we can have the discussion and final retreat on. So we balance the budget. So what money are we talking about when we say we have this money to program for projects? What is that money? We don't want a project, we don't want a plan and program one-time money out of tax settlements. We can, but they should be one-time type expenditures. And if they are some type of recurring maintenance and operation that goes with that, then we need to understand that from a budget perspective. So when we look at, what are we talking about? Well, it's kind of what Councilmember Teeter is mentioning where you're saying, you know, where we have through the budget process, and I know Roger said this isn't a budget discussion, but it is. It's kind of a combination of the two. When you look at how you want to budget for the city, you have to do an opportunity cost. So you look at, when we have a gap, we go back to staff and we say, okay, everybody think of some innovative ideas to either generate revenue or save money. And then if we get to a point, we say, okay, we're going to do a 2% across-the-board cut. And then basically, we'll come back with a balanced budget. So if you're looking at projects and the project is rec center up north and Tower Road, the biggest ticket items on there, well, there's no way we can fund those through our current budget. So we're talking about new revenues. We have to identify new revenues because we can only leverage some of our budget capacity to get to that point. And that's only going to get us, it's like the ramp on Tower Road and Pena. We could probably put a million five together to do the study, but what good is that going to do us if we don't have the rest of it to start programming? So that's the discussion. And it's, don't be too hard on yourself because this is, you know, there are months spent on capital improvement programs. And so you're doing a miniature program right now, tonight, just to give us the priorities. So you're really looking at the highest level of detail and not the specific 5,000 and 2,000-foot level. You're saying, here's what we want, go make it so, go figure it out, come back, let us know how we're going to do that. And we would come back to you in regular updates. So, you know, I think for this exercise, it's as Jason said, what does success look like? In another way of saying it is, what does success look like in 10 years? What is the city you vision in 10 years from now? After these expenditures, what do you see the city looking like? We did an exercise like that three or four years ago, I think. And we said, what is it, what does the northern range look like in 10 years in your mind of success? A rec center, a library, a police substation, Tower Road fully built out? You know, maybe those aren't realistic, but I think that's the vision that we need to have. And if it goes into that second 10 years, then that's good. That means we're making progress. So I just want to say that, you know, we can reset the button a little bit, but understand that this is, this is an exercise that you all are participating in tonight to give us all a general idea of where we want to go.
Okay. And then Mr. Mcleodany.
Jason, to your struggles, fully realize everything you're saying, but that is why I believe that you have to have a designated funding source. If you have a designated funding source, then you can plan for the future. That's why we have to go out to the citizen. And then it's no different than somebody saying, we put money every week into the Christmas fund so we can buy presents. You can add it up, you know what you're going to have at the end. If it's not big enough to do the project or the gift you want to do Christmas, you wait two years. But we can do a plan then. We can, we can plan here, we can plan with the citizens. If you give us a designated funding source, this is what we can do. Or they can tell us what to do. But yeah, because I don't think we can do this if we don't start thinking that you designate money to specific projects. Whether later on, we go for a public safety funding to say that we're going to continually funding the police department so that we can get that substation. But I think we have, I don't think you can just sit here every year and try to figure out where you pull money from and which project, because I don't think we're ever going to have enough money to do the big projects if we don't do that.
To jump in on that, and thank you, because I, we're on the same page in that regard. And trying to think where I wanted to go here. I think, I think there's merit in, we all get it, right? We understand that there's a limit to what we can do. For the citizens who don't sit here every Monday night and aren't in the meetings that we're in and don't necessarily get it, it's a big mystery. And I think it's easy enough for us to look at the citizen survey or the conversations that we have at the gas station or the grocery store with folks about what they think is important. And those all help color what we treat as priorities as a council member. I guess going back to sort of the model where you've got what you've got, figure out how best to spend it. To me, almost have to take what we know the priorities to be as they relate to the priorities that we have set fairly consistently for the last couple of years and prior to that. I don't know why we necessarily go back and reprioritize now when we have priorities that we came into this with, right? Tower was at the top of that list. I mean, we had roadways that were identified. But I guess my point being, model the budget over the next, you know, 20, 30 years that show, and show how these projects will just never get done. And say, because at some point, if you do have to go to the voters, and I think we're essentially suggesting as much, something has to change, right? Some radical change has to happen to enable funding of these things. Well, how do you, how do you help our citizen understand why? How do you make it absolutely plain? Well, here's what the world looks like if we change nothing. Your needs will continue to go unmet. So I guess in my mind, it's as if we should presume that, you know, extra money is required to do the big things. Let's do our best to program a, you know, a play budget, if you will, for this purpose and put that together and then look at what the delta is, right? What's a, what's a reasonable amount of revenue increase over and above what we have today? And how might that affect our ability to solve for some of these projects? How does it change it? So maybe you've got sort of budget model A, which assumes no change, year one through 10, year 11 through 20, et cetera, et cetera. Let's say we introduce three different revenue enhancement measures. How does that, how does that change your ability to plan in the same increments? Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that now, now we're playing in real terms. Now we can sit down and say, oh, well, maybe I would shift this thing out into the, into the second 10-year interval, and I would bring this thing up into this first 10-year interval, and we start to now play with it a little bit. And we can then develop a strategy that says, well, here's how you go. Now we know what we need to go after, right? We have clear, clear goals. So we can go after that highway two or...
Instead of 10 years, why don't we break it down to five years?
Yeah, five years.
Five-year increments because it's more immediate of what we're getting done and how we're prioritizing our money.
Just to time bound it in some way.
Right. You actually put a timeline on it. And it, people expect to see things done at the end of this. 10 years is a long time to wait. But five years, you say, okay, by this five-year period with our funding sources A, B, and C, we're going to get, or we're going to definitely try to get this, this, and this done, or this done. This is such a big project, this is what we're going to accomplish. And that accomplishment might be something that helps accomplish the B on the list and C on the list. So, and if you don't dream big, you'll never get nothing big done. And so I, I just, we can't look small. We've got to, I mean, the northern trails, when Mr. Tinklinbird said, well, I see what you said in transportation, but what did you guys want to do in trails and recreation? And everybody said, can we defer this to after lunch or after dinner? Well, dinner's over, so we're going to go back to you now. I would like to see some people come through. Okay? Dominic is smiling, so I know he's got an answer.
I've got mine picked out. I'm ready to go.
So nobody can talk after he's done.
Well, so I'm looking at the parks and open space recreation and trails projects. And conventional thinking for me looks at the pot of money that we have available, the 6.3. Okay, how do I fit as many projects into that 6.3 as possible? But that's the wrong way to think. It's, it's how do, what do we want to do right now? What do we not have the money to accomplish, but we can still, we can still look at doing it? So what I have currently is the loop and neighborhood connections, because I think that visibility aspect is so important that people see what they're getting immediately, right away. So we have something to point to to say, hey, this is where your taxpayer funds are going. The Fairfax, Fairfax Park drainage and irrigation renovation, that's a big one for me as well. And the loops, loop trails north of 96th Avenue. I had a question about how these projects were listed. Carolyn, are these listed in terms of urgency within the years or are they just in random order? Because I was curious about that.
Fairfax is an urgency, and we're already making progress towards funding for that. The loop trails, all of those pieces were a result of our recreation strategic plan and the surge, survey that indicated that trail connectivity was the number one priority. So we've continued to chip away at those projects. So that's, that's why that's listed in it.
Great.
Fairfax would be the critical need for replacement of the irrigation.
Right.
But we're well on our way there.
Great.
Okay. Where is all your maintenance stuff on this list?
It's in the one-sheater, it's in the back.
Yeah, it's in the, I know, it's in the back. But that's, that's got to be part of this because if we're doing new stuff, if you're putting in new trails and doing all of this other, and we fall behind, and then all of a sudden, we have irrigation problems at Buffalo Run or a pond goes dry, that's going to impact us pretty critical with the people that are out there all the time looking at this gem of ours. So we need to be watching those numbers also.
Mr. Mayor, if I might jump in.
Yes, please.
Sorry, Carolyn. I went back to a previous slide. And if you recall, we talked about the lottery money coming from Conservation Trust and Adams County Open Space money going for capital maintenance and replacement projects.
Which will take care of the golf course.
So that would take care of projects which would be subject to the annual appropriation of the budgeting process.
Right.
So that priority within that category can change from year to year depending on, you know, needs that arise.
Okay.
So from that standpoint, those type of projects.
Are handled.
Are handled because you said, let's continue using that money for that purpose.
Now this is just 6.3 for just anything we want to do new?
Not quite. The 6.3 million is park impact fee money, which means it needs to be tied to growth areas. So that means pretty much the northern range. There is some park impact fee money from, from the southern historic city, but it's a small portion of the overall total. So really, we're looking at 6.3 million. Where do we spend it? In the north range? And what do we spend it for? So breaking it down, as Mr. Bullock said, in the next five years, what do you want to spend 3 million on? That's really what it boils down to.
And I'm probably with Mr. Marino, even though he's going to want to talk after me. Let's get the trails done. Mr. Bullock.
And that's the same thing I said, the trails northern range. And as Ms. Keith said, she looped them all, she lumped them all into one loop. And so it's a $15.9 million project, but the equipment costs and the maintenance costs are probably the most least expensive costs of all the maintenance costs on everything because they are trails. So between equipment and maintenance annually...
Yeah, it's not many.
Okay. Between equipment and maintenance costs annually, it's $120,000. But, and if you, I know, I'm sure glad Mike Brown isn't here, so he doesn't hear this and don't nobody tell him. But you know, trails, that's one of the things that is easy to work on because when you aren't working on it, it's still a trail. When you are working on it, it's a better trail. So, I mean, boy, if he heard that, I'd be getting, so, but I, I think that trails on the northern range is the project. But you know, what's funny is Ms. Keith said Fairfax is a priority. So if Fairfax is a priority, we need to hit our priorities first because it's a priority for a reason.
I did have a question about what Roger brought up, and I don't want to reopen the discussion of park impact fees in relation to, a discussion we've already had with Pioneer Park and where they're spent in the city. But if that's the case, if these park impact fees have to be tied to development areas, how then do we fund a project like Fairfax?
Well, in terms of legal requirement, those monies can be used anywhere in the city. However, we've had many discussions where politically, that money needs to be tied to where the development is occurring. So I have to offer that caveat. Going back to what Carolyn said, Fairfax Park is being funded through grants and some of the existing money, and I would defer for further for her.
Our, I'm going to call it our first phase, which is the irrigation, which we received the recent grant from Adams County Open Space. We're covering the irrigation. You will see in the 2012 budget presentation, a recommendation for CIP funding for the continued improvements from, for Fairfax Park. But the funding source will be either lottery or Adams County Open Space. It will not be park impact fee. We feel very confident that we can be successful in our grant application, both with GOCO and Adams County Open Space, hopefully. So we are not suggesting park impact fee for funding of that particular project.
Okay. And you're confident that we can use, we can leverage funds like GOCO and Adams County Open Space to fund the entirety of the project? Or would council still need appropriate for CIP?
Yeah, there always has to be, as city...
Do you have an idea of how much that CIP might be? I guess it just depends on how many grants you get, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll present that in the 2012 budget presentations there.
Great. That clears some things up. Thank you.
You know, we spent the last three years in DC trying to get that million and a half dollars for the Tower Pena off-ramp. If we got a little money to spend on that, I don't think, and I tell people, we're trying to get this million and a half in the federal budget, and they kind of roll their eyes like, yeah, well, good luck. And I'm beginning to think that they're probably right. I'm not sure that that's ever going to happen. And we're not going to be able to put any real pressure on E470 to complete the construction of it until we get the design and engineering done. I think we ought to spend a million and a half of that money just to get that done so we can say, okay, E470, we're ready to go. Now it's your obligation to bill the off-ramp. And I just, I don't think we're going to get this money out of the federal government. We've been trying for a long time, there's just no money there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in, unless there's more discussion?
Just, I thought... I want to make a comment that what you need to understand as staff is, as each one of us brings up what we feel, it does not make it a council decision. Okay. Mr. Bullock, were you going to say something? Or Mr. Mcleodany?
I just, I mean, as guilty as anybody, I was ready to send this on another round around the horn here. I don't want to, I want to get this, throw this back to you guys. I mean, I guess, I'm going to send it around the horn again, I think. The, well, just this discussion. I mean, we're trying to close this out, and I'm trying to figure out how we move it ahead. We haven't given a definitive answer yet to Mr. Tinklinbird.
That's what's bothering me because he keeps asking the same question. Dominic's answered, I've answered, and Jason's answered, and Kathy's answered. And what is your park and recreations project?
I'll have to turn our kids on.
Okay, but at least tell us what the ideal is so we can boil it down to one. Maybe your idea will be the one we decide on, but I haven't heard yours yet.
Well, if it's going to girls' club, it's not going to hear it.
Okay.
I understand.
No, and she knows that.
I just wanted to be the final one.
Yeah, okay, so if it's not the boys and girls' club, it won't be an idea?
No, I did say that. I'm saying, you know how I've been about girls.
So I have another way, maybe we can experiment with that exercise. We have, we have a list of priorities on the board for parks and open space. Clearly, there are projects like Pioneer, or like Fairfax that have been prime candidates for grant funding. And it sounds like there's an opportunity or at least an objective to try and fund that over time as much as we can with grants. There's a matching requirement to that. So in rough terms, that's a planable factor, right? This is an objective. Set Fairfax aside, it gets a big G and an M. Grant and match. What else on this list could be funded through grants? Grant-match strategies. And then what of those could be funded through the park impact fee? And then what of those are the outliers, like a new recreation center or the First Creek Community Park, which are complete bogies on the radar right now and would require some potentially new funding source? Does that make sense? So that we're not thinking in more granular terms, let's at least just bucketize these and then we can set them aside and say, great, staff's job is to figure out how to program these through existing revenues into our grant and match strategy. And then all of a sudden, we have a shortlist left that becomes our, potentially a target for us to look at, how do we fund through revenue enhancement? And then in it, they can become a discussion of, is this a ballot measure? Is it a solo ballot measure? I mean, we can get to that point later, but I guess, just to feel like we've gotten some sort of framing around this, I'm just throwing out the idea.
I have heard, if I may jump in, I have heard several people say trails for the 6.3 million. If that is the case, if that's the consensus of council, for the 6.3 million, not talking about that's the highest priority, but for the 6.3 million, then we can move on.
Okay. We good with that?
So are we okay with not...
With the $6 million?
Oh, without the $6 million.
We're talking about $6 million in 10 years.
$6 million.
So Roger, we're okay with just saying trails and not specifying an actual project?
Correct.
Leaving that up to staff's discretion?
Well, certainly not staff's discretion, but there's a conversation.
Their ideas and...
Yeah. We would come back to you with, with ideas for the budget process, and then it would be council's approval in terms of specific projects.
Great. I'm, I'm completely fine with trails.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I'm still thinking that we need to put some money into Fairfax. And is that going along? Right, so it's completely being...
But we don't know. She said, she'll come back.
But we don't have an exact number on what that's going to look like. Do we even have an idea with through grants, what's that, what that's going to look like, Carolyn? I'm just trying to get a general idea of how, if you even have a basic idea what that might look like. Sorry, didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. We've looked extensively at Fairfax Park and we'll be requesting in the 2012 CIP approximately another 300,000 to 400,000 that we'll be looking for matches. And we currently have a little over half a million with the grant we just received for the irrigation. So what we're looking at is that if council approves our 2012 CIP request for Fairfax, and we're successful with our grant applications that we're anticipating with GOCO and Adams County Open Space, that we may be able to fund our entire Fairfax renovation and improvements over the next two years here. And that, that's using our lottery and/or Adams County Open Space pass-through. That's not, we're not proposing park impact fee.
Okay, that helps me with that. So then basically, every dime of all of those going into it, you could think you could, we could come close to funding the whole thing.
That's what we're looking at. We're bringing a complete plan with our CIP. We have to go through the budget process here, and then it'll be, it'll come to you.
Okay. Then I'm fine with the loops and neighborhood connections. The trails, thanks.
Okay. That answered my question. Thank you. Sorry it took so long.
Okay, the new guy.
New guy's ready to talk.
All right.
What do you think, Paul?
Yes, what do I think? I apologize. I've mentioned to you guys that one of the reasons why I'm kind of just sitting here soaking it in, besides the fact that pretty much as soon as I was sworn in, I was thrown into the seat and given a big binder. And for a lot of these, this is the first time that I've really seen these projects. And so I haven't really gotten a chance to really soak in what the projects entail and the dollar amounts that are attached to it and how that really fits in with revenues versus expenditures. But I think through personal conversations with a lot of you guys and you went through the interview process, one of the things that I did mention was my support for Parks and Rec and mentioning the need for the trail systems, just because of the connectivity as it was brought up and the long-term effects of really bringing an identity to the city. So throughout listening to your conversations, that's kind of what drew me to that. So it sounds like for the most part, we're starting to reach a consensus at that point.
Your honor, sir.
Thank you very much. Moving on then.
Yes.
The next question for you is, do you want to stabilize revenues for the general fund? And that basically moves, means moving the vulnerable revenues out of the general fund, moving those over to the capital improvement project fund, which will help on the project side, but it hurts on the general fund side, and that means we would have to backfill. So the first question is, do you want to move those revenues out of the general fund? And then we'll follow that up with, if it's a yes, then we'll follow up with, what revenues do you want to backfill? You know, what do you want to use to replace that money? So again, just to recap, we're talking about 2.1, almost 2.2 million dollars that's in the general fund. The con is we lose our revenue from the general fund and we have to replace the revenue. The pro is that it provides funding for more capital projects, and as I mentioned before dinner, it provides a fallback revenue in case of a downturn in the economy again. So here, here are the money, here are the various funding sources. Highway users' tax, 1.5 million dollars, and that would need to be used for road projects then. Motor vehicle registrations, again, recommended for road projects. County road and bridge tax, that would have to be used for road and, for road projects. Cigarette tax could be used for anything. I just love the irony of using it for parks, trails, and open space. So that's the recommendation for using it there. Now, there is a way to replace that money, and I talked about that also. There's a refuse collection fee, stormwater utility fee, and you'll notice that that is about 2.5 million. The amount we're removing from the general fund is 2.1 million. So there would be a net gain of 320,000 for the general fund if we made that move. So that's one option. Here's the revenue that's vulnerable, is that top little band of maroon. That's without that vulnerable revenue, and here it is with the replacement revenue. So total is stabilized then. So back to the question. There's other options as well, but first question is, do you want to take that vulnerable revenue out of the general fund?
Okay, Mr. Bullock and then Ms. Teeter.
Yes.
Switch.
We have keypad polling for this. So unless you want to discuss first, we'll go right to keypad polling.
Yep, we're going to walk through that.
Did you have a question before?
So here's the instructions, here's how the keypad polling works. All the questions are going to be multiple choice. You select one answer. You'll press the corresponding number on your response card. So if your answer is number one, obviously, you're going to push number one on your small little keypad. At the beginning, you'll get 10 seconds to answer, and I'll have a counter that shows with such, so few folks, we'll probably move this along fairly rapidly. And please return the clickers, they're the most expensive thing, and we have homing beacons in them, so we'll come find you. We have a couple test questions just to get you guys ready for this whole thing. So in what metropolitan area has... So in what metropolitan area has, is there a city called City of Industry? Is it around Boston, around Houston, around Seattle, around Los Angeles, or around San Francisco? And you can go ahead and poll.
It's with your keypads.
And then you got 10 seconds. Nine. And for those of you who can see, at the very top, there's a number that says nine responses now. So it is Los Angeles?
So we got one right.
Relatable trivia question. When was Commerce City Incorporated? December 23, 1897, June 18, 1925, June 23, 1918, or December 18, 1852?
I don't have any idea.
Go ahead and poll.
Do you know? I don't think that's...
So only seven people responded, and it was a trick question. Because it's actually December 18, 1952. 1952, December 8, 1952.
Funny thing, I saw a nine.
Okay. So are you ready? The first question is on this revenue stabilization. So do you want to stabilize revenues? If you do, push one, and if you don't, push two. Go ahead and poll right now. You get six seconds now. All right, there's all nine of you. So 78% of you said yes. Okay, so the question now is, how do you want to stabilize?
I'm going to refuse all the fees.
Refuse fees, stormwater fees, both of those fees, or some other option? And you can go ahead and poll. Five of you, six of you? Seven, eight, nine? Great. Okay. So all of you want both of those used? Okay. Did you want me to keep truckin'? We're going to switch back. Roger's going to talk a little bit next about prioritization.
Just to set this up, now we're into capital projects, and so here, we're not fiscally constrained with existing money at this point, so... You had to step out for a second. So I'll just talk. We don't need me, we'll need to switch back to where we were, though. This is capital projects. Total projects, John, we need you up front here. Without ranking in terms of existing money versus new money, this is everything. What's the total list? What's the priority rank? Not assuming anything about the funding sources yet. Is that okay?
We need you back to the keypad polling. What do you mean? Three.
Yeah, we need to switch to her, to the keypad polling.
Three or no? Okay. So you are going to ask this question three times, so before you poll. Well, we're going to ask you the same questions, same set of answers, three times. So what I want you to do is be thinking about, I'll ask you what your top capital priority is, your second top capital priority, and your third top capital priority. So take a look at those things. Roads, infrastructure, or two, for open space trails, increased public safety, staff and facilities, increased recreational facilities and staff, five, increased city level services and facilities.
Mr. Kayla.
City levels of service and staff levels, and economic development. So think about it, your top three in your head, and I'm going to ask you for your top, your first top capital priority right now. Make sense? Any questions? Okay, go ahead and give me your top priority. Go ahead and poll right now.
And number eight is the boys and girls club.
Okay. Oops, sorry, I forgot that one on there. So for many of you, 44% of you are looking at roads and infrastructure, 22% of you are looking at increased public safety and staff facilities, and 22% are looking at the recreation facilities, and 7% is looking at the economic development opportunities. Okay, so this next one is your second top priority. So go ahead and poll. What's your second top capital priority? Five of you, six of you? Seven of you? Eight? Nine? Okay. So again, 44% are going for roads and infrastructure, 11% for the public safety, 22% again for the increased recreation facilities, and a little bit higher on the economic development side, 22%. Okay, this is your third top priority. And go ahead and poll.
Third one.
Third. Six, seven, eight? One more? Okay, so for the third round, increasing public safety again is getting 22%, as is the increased recreation, and now economic development opportunities has increased significantly to 56%. So for those of you who are keeping track, roads and infrastructure playing twice, public safety, increase in public safety and increase in recreation, ranked all three of those, as do the economic development opportunities.
Okay, thank you very much. That was very helpful. Now, talking about potential funding sources, we have a number of options up here. They are not in any preferred rank or ordering or anything like that, they're just thrown up there. The only one that's not on the list is medical marijuana, and I have that separately. We have, that'll be part of the polling, but I just don't have it on this list. Medical marijuana, making some assumptions based on other cities, it sounds like it's in the order of, one dispensary would be the approximate equivalent of one fast food restaurant. So that means if, and I did not mean that in...
I find that funny, because if they go into the marijuana place, the fast food's going to sell more food, too.
I understand there is a relationship. I've been told that, but... So if you look at the sales tax only, that would be in the neighborhood estimated at $35,000 per year. If you look at an excise tax, it would be $10,000 per 1% of excise tax that you put on it. In other words, 4% excise tax would be 40,000 per dispensary, 10% excise tax would be 100,000 per dispensary. So again, not making any assumptions about the number of dispensaries. Excuse me. Increasing impact fees assumes 500 homes per year would be a million dollars if we doubled the road impact fee and add another $500 per unit for park impact fee. Sales tax increase for every one half cent, it would be 4.2 million. Property tax increase for each mill increase, it would be 675,000. Sales tax on food is estimated at about 2 million. Head tax, 11 million. That's assuming at the Denver rate of $15 per paycheck, et cetera, et cetera. You can read through these, you've had the list before. Second page of the list, we looked at advertising on city vehicles, graffiti removal fee. These are in the smaller dollars until you get down to road maintenance fee, number 20, that would be 4.8 million, assuming $20 per household per month. That's pretty steep. But again, that number was derived from the existing parks, I'm sorry, the existing public works budget. Not saying that that's what it has to be, but just using that as the number to generate an assumed number. Additional traffic officer, 217,000, et cetera. So again, you can see those numbers, and so we'll go back to the keypad polling. Wow. Yes, sir.
Roger, on the increase in impact fees, estimated at 500 homes a year, how many homes have been built this year so far? Is that an optimistic estimate? Is that a low estimate?
That would be an optimistic estimate. We budgeted based on a lower number than that for this year, and so that's assuming that growth picks up in the future. But we're running about seven to nine units per month right now, so it's much lower.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe this is to Tom. Tom, when we spoke on, was that Friday? We had looked at this list, and I think there were some examples where there was sort of a flavor A, flavor B, or I think the example on the prior page, the last one on the list, the parking fee, wasn't that parking fee actually the existing parking fee dollars, not new parking fee dollars? Okay. Did you guys catch that?
The parking fee would be a reprogramming of the existing parking fee on Pro Park. And then Roger's also got some examples of sales tax and property tax comparisons as well, when we get to that point.
Yeah.
Head tax, no, but it was, it's the $15 was based on Denver's every other paycheck. Just for clarification, the parking fee would be a new revenue in the sense that we have not received it to date, but Tom is correct, it would be a redirecting of it from the general fund to this type of a purpose, if you wanted to dedicate it to a capital project, for example.
Can you tell me this carbon-based fuel tax? Who are we, I don't understand it at all.
That was just a brainchild that was based on if we taxed electricity, electrical sales, and natural gas sales, and also fuel sales to basically, and that may assume that you want to direct it to a particular use in terms of having the city become a sustainability city, a green city, but again, it was just one of the ideas that were thrown out there. There were a lot of ideas, not all of them were practical, it was one of the ideas thrown out there.
Yes, I have a question directed to you, Tom. On the head tax, it says per paycheck, is that monthly?
That assumes bi-weekly.
Okay, because Denver's is 5.75, $5.75 once a month on the 15th.
Okay, then I was incorrect.
This is way too high.
I was told it was $15 per paycheck, so...
No, it's, and that's monthly, $5.75, so...
We ready to vote? Are we ready?
If we're ready, we'll go back to keypad polling.
On the keypad polling, we're going to separate these things out by fee options and tax options, so you're not going to poll 24 things at once. There is, so let me ask this question first. Do you want to increase revenues? Uh, go ahead and poll. We're just testing you. We're just testing.
It's not even a fair question, is it? You want to increase revenues?
But I mean, it's still... Do we need more money to run the city or not?
Well, yeah, you do.
So it's a simple question.
If you need to change your answer, just push whichever button you want to answer differently, if you want it differently. But yes or no? Okay, I've got nine, you ready?
Yep.
So 100% say yes? How, the question now is, how do you want to increase revenues? Fees? Taxes? Or both? Go ahead and poll. Fees, taxes, or both?
And there's not an either, right?
Not an either. Well, the either is you pick one if you want just fees, two if you just want taxes, and three if you want both.
Nobody mean, there's not a neither?
You could abstain, I guess. There's not an either, you could abstain. Okay, I'm going with seven is it. So two seconds left, final polling. Okay. So 43 said taxes, 57 said both, and we had three abstaining.
Two.
Two? Oh, right, two, sorry. Okay, we're going to ask three significant questions about fee options. What fees you might want to address. Just moved by itself. What fees you want to address, then we're going to ask you what fees are off the table. So we're going to be asking you your top three, and sort of like your bottom three. And then we're going to ask questions about what fees staff should work on for next year. There is one downside to this keypad polling that you'll notice, you only have 10 options, and there are 16 fees. So we have a creative way of asking you your top three for the fees. What I want to show you first, and I'll flip back and forth between these two slides, is the 16 fees that you're going to find the top three. So it would be who view to write on a piece of paper, here's my top three, here's the three that are off the table, and here's the three that we want staff to work on. So again, I'll flip between these two, but the first question will be, what's your top three? So increased impact fees, toll on road, on Tower Road, park and road improvement fees, parking fee dedicated to Tower Road, advertising on city vehicles, graffiti removal fee, additional cell tower, increased road impact fee, additional red light camera, used speed control vans, established road maintenance fee, political sign permit fees, increased port times, increased recreation fees, additional traffic officer, and some other. So again, think about, I'll flip back, your top three.
I believe it ended up in the fees, yes. Yes.
Okay, so top three, you got them? This is where you guys just shake your heads yes or no, that yes, you got them, so you can move on. Okay, so think about the three you don't want, the three that are totally off the table, never going to do it, don't want to do it. Certainly not now, not going to do it. Write down the three you're not going to do. Okay, we're going to talk about the staff one in a slightly different way. All right, we ready?
Yeah.
Yep. I'll go back again. Not going to do. Here's the second page, and then here's the first page. Okay, ready? Okay, so what I'm going to do is go one by one, and you tell me whether this one is in your top, is in your top three, fee options to address by November, or not. So if impact fees is one of your top three, push yes. If it is not, push no. Make sense? If this is your top, yes?
I wrote down the numbers of the...
Impact fee was number one. So the number is actually, yeah, at the very end of the, says increase, impact fees, number one. Okay, we got eight, we got nine. Okay. So 78% said no, 72% said yes. All right, so toll on Tower Road, number two, is this in your top three? Yes or no? Go ahead and poll. Yes or no? In your top three, toll on Tower Road? Top three? Eight, one more? Great. 100% said no. All right, is this park and road improvements, number three? Is that in your top three? Go ahead and poll. Couple more? All right, five, four, three, two, one. Okay, 75% said no. Parking fee dedicated to Tower Road, is this in your top three? Go ahead and poll. Eight, one more? Always push the number again. Great, we got nine. 78% said no. Advertising on city vehicles, number five, in your top three? Two more? Eight, one more? 100% said no. Graffiti removal fee, number six, in your top three or not? In your top three or not? 78% said no. 82% said yes. Additional cell tower, number seven, is it in your top three? Couple more. Press your answer again, just to make sure. Five, four, three, two, one. Eight, 75% said no. Increased road impact fees, number eight. Yes, in your top three? Yes, in the top three? Six, seven. Couple more, eight, one more. Okay, 89% says no. Additional red light camera, number nine. Yes, in your top three? No, you're not in your top three. Seven, two more? One more? Always re-push. Five, four, three, two, one. 75% said no. Using speed cameras, or speed control vans, number 10. Yes, in your top three or not in your top three? Seven, couple more? Eight, five, four, three, great. 89% says no. Establishing road maintenance fees, that's number 11, in your top three, yes or no? Go ahead. Six, seven. Eight, five, four, three, two, one. 100% said no. Political sign permit fee, number 12. See, now you're quicker. Eight, nine, that was fast. 33%, it is in your top three, 33% top three. Increased court fines, number 13. Couple more, 13, in your top three? Yes or no? One more. 56 say yes. Okay, increased recreation fees, in your top three? Seven, eight, nine, eight, one more. Five, four, three, two, one. Oh, yes, not going to. 89% said no. Okay, two more, additional traffic officer, is it in the top three? Five, six, seven. Two more? Eight, one more. Five, four, three, two, one. 25% says yes, 75% says no, and then other. And if you put other, we're going to figure out what that means later, but other. Six, couple more. Other matters to you, whatever that other is for you. Seven, great, we're going to count down, five, four, three, two, one. 14% said yes, 86% no. Okay, we're going to ask what's in your top three for the bottom, the thing you are unwilling to address, what's off the table to address by November. Again, y'all are ready for this one, right? These are the 16. Okay, ready? So, impact fees, is it in the bottom or not? Bottom three, impact fees, increasing impact fees, yes or no? Go ahead. It's in the bottom. Eight, one more. Five, four, three, two, one. Okay, so, 38% of you say it is off the table, 63% it's not off the table. Toll on Tower Road, off the table, and one of the three that's off the table for you? One more? Five, four, three, two, one. So, 63% of you say a toll on Tower Road is off the table. Okay, park and road improvement fees, number three, is it, how many for you is this off the table, it's at the bottom three, off the table? One more? 44% say it's off the table, 56 it's not off the table. Parking fee dedicated to Tower Road. Go ahead. So, taking the parking fee dedicated to Towers off the table? One more? Five, four, three, two, one. 80% say leave it on the table, 13% say take it's off the table. Advertising on city vehicles, is it in your bottom three? Is it one of the things that should be off the table? 44% of you say, yeah, take it off the table, 56% of you say it's possible. Graffiti removal fees, for whom of you is it off the table? In the bottom three? One more? 22%, only 22% say it's off the table, 78% say it's possible. Additional cell tower, off the table? Bottom three? 22% of you say it's off the table, 78 say it's on. Increased road impact fee, off the table? Bottom three? Two more? Eight, one more? So, 60% of you say it's possible, 33% are saying it's off the table. Additional red light camera, number nine, off the table? 78% say it's still on the table, 22% say it's off. Using speed control vans, number 10. One more? Five, four, three, two, one. 25% say it's off the table, 75% say it's still on. Establishing road maintenance fee, number 11. Six, seven, eight, nine. 33% say it's off the table, 67 say it's still on. Political sign permit fee, off the table? 33 say it's off the table, 67 say it's still on. Increasing court fines, guess the answer to this one? 22 say it's off the table, 78 say it's still on the table. Increasing recreation fees. All right, 33 say it's off, 67 say it's still on. Two more, additional traffic officer? 11% say it's off, 89 say it's still on, and the other, the catch-all. Leave the catch-all away. Six, couple more, weigh in. Five, four, three, two, one. 14 say, 14 say whatever it is, it's off the table. Okay, so, just to recap, the ones that were the highest, 63% was, 63% of you thought the toll on Tower Road was in the bottom three, 38% felt that increasing impact fees was off the table, and then there were several 33%. Oh, 44% advertising on city vehicles, 44% said park and road improvement fee was also off the table. Okay, we're going to ask the, what's your top three fee options for staff to work on next year in clumps? So, I'm going to ask you your top three for the 1 through 8, and then I'll ask your top through 3 for 1 through 16, or 9 through 16. Makes sense? So, basically, you're picking six ultimately. So, think about, think about which one of these, 1 through 8, your top three, your first, your second, your third, and then we'll ask the second set. So, what's your top three fee options for the staff to work on for next year? Go ahead and poll. Which one of these is the top? Sorry. Let's try that again. Okay, go ahead and poll. This is your top option for staff to work on next year, not this year. Okay, eight, one more? I'm going to re-enter just in case. Okay. Any results? I will not show you the results, but I will tell you what they are next time. Go ahead and poll for your second. Second one you want to work on. Maybe I asked this question twice. I'm going to do it unfortunately twice, that's fine. One more? We'll re-enter your current number. So, 33% of you are thinking that additional cell towers would be good to look at for next year, and 22% of you, parking fee dedicated to Tower Road might be good to look at. I must have answered the question twice. So, what is your second of the top fee options? Don't worry about it, it'll work out. This is actually second. They're, we're going to cul- we'll culminate them in a 1 through 3, not in a 1, top, second, third, we'll just figure out what the top three are in no particular order, so.
Didn't you answer twice though for the first? To the time we are in our own selection, right?
First time didn't count.
I'm going to say the first time didn't count, so whatever your first one was, enter it now.
The one you thought you entered first didn't take, so enter it.
So, this was the top rather than the second, for those of you. So, again, 33, 33% of you are looking to figure out what tower, this dedicated fee to Tower Road might look like, 2% of you additional cell tower, and 11 split among several others. Okay, here's the last chance to get at this one. 1 through 8. Go ahead and poll. Couple more. Couple more, you only have seven. Go ahead and push that button again for whatever your third option is. Four, three, two, one. Okay, again, parking fee dedicated to Tower Road, 25% is on there. Graffiti removal fee shows up higher on this one, as does increasing impact fees. Okay, so, now I'm going to ask you four, don't poll on this slide, the next set. Again, 1 through 3, 9 through 16. They will not be listed as 9 through 16 because of the way the polling system works. This is 9 through 16. So, go ahead and pick your first top fee option for staff to work on next year in this clump. And this is your top one. One more? We've got six of you. Seven. Eight, one more? Always pushing again. Okay. So, on the second set, increasing court fines, 50%, that's what you would like to see the staff work on next year, and then pretty evenly, evenly split over red light cameras, road maintenance fees, political sign permit, and additional traffic officer. Second, second top. I'm trying to shorten the number of questions you're going to answer on this. Seven, anyone else want to weigh in? Push the right one now, it erases the one you did before, keeps whatever your last one was. So, quick look, even split over four of them, looking at the staff, you want staff to look next year at red light cameras, road maintenance fees, political sign permit, increased court on. All right, last one, for staff to work on. Couple more? Eight, one more? Okay, so, last shot, all over the map. Additional traffic officer, political sign, political sign permit fee, and used speed control vans are 22% of you, and then 11 among the other three. So, we're going to do the same set for tax options, the nice thing about tax options, there's only 10 answers. So, we only have to do a three, count six.
And Roger went through these already, so we'll just keypad poll on taxes.
Okay. And I got to reopen this. Go ahead and poll, so this is which tax option are you willing to address by November? Sales tax, number one, property tax increase, number two, sales tax on food, number three, head tax, four, forming a new GID, five, former recreation district, seven, admissions tax or seat tax, six, that carbon-based fuel tax, nine, increasing the motel tax, and 10, the marijuana tax. We've got seven responses? Couple more? Go ahead and push your answer again. You would? Still only get seven or eight?
One more?
There's nine. Okay, 56% of you are saying that your top is the sales tax increase. And 22% of you are talking about forming a new GID, as well as 22% for the marijuana tax. Okay, second top. Second top option, which one are you? Okay, so, if it's second, you're more all over the map, but the admissions or seat tax is 22%, medical marijuana, again, 22%, and then a fairly even split over the sales tax, property tax, head tax. Now things get a little more spread out. Okay, and your third top tax option? Five of you? Six of you? Seven? Two more? Eight? Nine? Okay, and so, for the third, this time property tax is getting 22%, and the medical marijuana is 33%, with head tax at 11, which is, again, this is spread out among 11%. So, obviously, medical marijuana made it into the people's top 1, 2, and 3, as does the forming the GID, and sales tax got a pretty high 56% on this top five. So, then we're going to talk about the what are you unwilling? What are your three unwilling's? So, which one are you unwilling to address that is off the table? Two more? Maybe two of you think no sales tax, no taxes off the table. Eight? Four, three, two, one. Okay, so, 33% of you believe that the property tax is off the table, as 33%, 38% of you also think sales tax on food is off the table, and 25% of you, it's the recreation district's off the table. Second tax that's off the table for you? One more? Three more? Two more? Okay, this is pretty spread out, but 22% of you are saying the head tax is off, 22% are saying the food tax is off, and 22% forming the recreation district. And then spread evenly among 11% for property tax, forming a new GID, and admissions. All right, final one, final X, final off the table. Two more? More, something off the table? Okay, 44% are saying it's off the table for property tax, and then pretty evenly distributed among sales. Forty-four percent are saying it's off the table for property tax, and then pretty evenly distributed among sales tax on food, forming the new GID, the Recreation District, seat tax, and... All right, so for unwilling, thirty, there's several of you who mentioned food tax, several who mentioned the Recreation District, um, and property tax got the highest, first, and third off the table. Okay, now, we're gonna do three that you want the staff to work on for next year. So I just think about which three, uh, this would be the first one you want the staff to work on, the first priority. Which tax you want the staff to work on next year? Yeah, this is just what you want the staff to work on, maybe it not be the tax of your choice. Everybody good?
Yep.
All right, so sixty-seven percent of you want staff to work on the property tax, and then eleven on head tax, forming the GID, and the marijuana tax for next year. For staff to work on? Did I say, oh, sorry? Yes, I did mean sales tax. Couple more? Two more? One more? Five, four, three, two, one? All right, pretty evenly split, but thirty-three percent are wanting to have the staff look at the marijuana tax, and then pretty evenly split among several others. All right, last one on the tax options. Five, four, three, two, one? Okay. Um, twenty-five, evenly split on twenty-five percent for the new GID, and twenty-five percent for forming the Recreation District. Um, and thirteen percent evenly distributed among several of the others. Property, sales, head, and motel tax. Okay, I think this may be the last question or second to last question. Are you willing to have staff pursue bonding to achieve the goals, other innovative financing sources to achieve the goals? Both of those things? None of those things? Or something else? Couple more, folks? Okay, so seventy-three percent say look at both, um, and then nice even split over either bonding or other innovative solutions. That's it? Nice job. I'll take those polling places. Is it that often?
I gotta go outside just to warm up. Yeah, I said, I said we should be outside. Yeah, you said that? Okay, well, eight-thirty, we'll be early by. I know, but I gotta go walk outside.
That is true. That, I didn't think about that. There's just one question.
I think he's in there.
Yeah.
There, probably won't remember.
You're right, though. The answer passed on forward. Don't talk, just go.
No, I gotta remember.
Could've just put a little, you know, thing right there.
I could've. I didn't have anything to tie it with. How's it? Fine. It's okay. A little bit.
No, actually, they have some also. I'm gonna get a vacation. So, but I'm... I'll go check on that.
Was trying to get me out of here? What are you saying? No, 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 no. I'm just saying. It's gonna be bad news. Somebody will... My friends, I'm not gonna... I'm just trying to be... Hi, Mr. Edgar.
Hi.
Hi, did you give me an email?
Which one?
It's the guy, it's the Ben Neil.
I'm not playing.
I know. He's got a pen, so he can...
Whoever he is, he's very helpful.
Yeah, I did get it. I sent it to you.
It's like a... No, but you should cover the same thing.
Cause you see... I mean, seriously, all of them.
It's not that close.
Or, you know...
You know, whatever. Even if it has a public tenant, I do...
There ain't going on.
You don't, you don't, you're not gonna have any revenues, and you can't build stuff.
We're just supposed to pull out...
Just like your Colorado Springs, that's what they do.
Is that what they do?
Everything's falling apart, cause they don't have a fear of tax.
Oh, yeah.
You drive in the interior of a city, there, there're curbs, sidewalks, and...
They don't need to take that tax. Especially when the little kids go to, and they learn all about how governments work. I can't think of the name right now, but... Little kids.
The bird gets one of them, and we've got a bird that built a nest on top of one of our speakers, that poor little hatchling. But they catch, and I forget, we, we think we've figured it out, but they are catching those moths just like that. We do not have a moth.
Oh, really? No moth?
I had a bunch of robins in my little juniper up front by my pond, and I swear, those little... And I had, it was like about three or four weeks, and they flew out of the nest.
Yeah, that's about, that's about all it takes.
I mean, I looked at them one day, it was like a two-day, and they're about that big. And then the next, the next week, they're about that big, and then about, just before they, they're almost full size. They're gone.
Miller moths.
Unbelievable. I can't believe how fast they grew.
We're thinking ours will probably, well, sometimes, we turn it out.
I had another little, they're getting too big for the nest. They're starting to overflow.
Isn't that funny when they get too big, and they're like, now what do we do?
One guy was hanging out on a limb, chirping, you know? So he says...
The brothers have kids.
Your mom and dad chirp us this every time they're out in the village, chirping, so their cats will be watching. So now we're gonna have to, as soon as the hatchlings or fledglings or whatever they call them get out on the ground, we're gonna have to take the dog out, because she will... So my little... Not just because she's gonna eat us, because she thinks it's a toll.
My little dachshund, one of my dachshunds does the same thing. How many chilts are there? It goes from that...
It's totally fair.
He's a hunter. He dug down, chasing a bull. All I could see was his rear end look there. He dug that far down into the ground chasing a...
Oh, my God.
And then he goes crazy with toads, cause we got toads all around. And, you know, I got all these huge rocks in back for ice skating, and those little toads are a crack. Get in there, dig a hole.
Does he get toads in our window?
Yeah.
And they tend to, no, ours tend to live.
Yeah, they go, they bury them.
Because Pam was, huh, let's gotta kill them. I said, no, cause they always end up back there. I said, they like it down there for some reason, just leave them alone.
That's what I would do, right? Like a little one crawl down the window. You know, like, with spiders and everything.
Funny, cause last year, one day, something got in my window, well, cause I was down in the basement, I'm looking, like, the hell? My screen was all torn up.
Oh, really?
And then there's a big mound underneath, and I'm like, I'm not digging that up. So I called a pest guy and took care of my kitchen problems. I said, what do you think that was? He goes, there's probably, he's really, it's probably a moth. He said, because I've had that happen before, and they just, they had sharp little nails. No, they'll ruin your screen. And it just decided it wasn't gonna go anywhere, so it just buried itself. It probably died, he said, seriously?
It's all little crumbs.
Yeah.
Okay, if I can get everybody back.
Destroyed my screen, huh?
Yeah.
Does insurance cover that for moths?
Stayed in my basement, did the same thing, but he gutted it up high, so he just got it clean, bounced it up down.
We'll talk after the fact, cause there's a, there's a...
I used to get a little, I used to get garter snakes in my other house in Denver, and they'd fall in, you know? I'd have to pull them out of there all the time. Must've been garter snake having around there when they built my house, you know? Cause they're still around, they're all over the place, you know? I used to, I'd catch them and take them across the street to the field when we lived over there.
My parents' squirrel down above the roof until they talked.
Oh, yeah.
I've had everybody in this town. We were on vacation. Come back and ask. Everybody is gonna talk at some point.
Is that right? Oh.
It's a demolished place. So, take it for what it's worth.
Yeah. Hey, I, I had one fall into my house in North Denver, and I couldn't figure what the hell it was, and my wife said, there's something in the chimney, there's something in the chimney. So I go over there, I go, yeah, there is. And I had the flu up. So I said, well, put the screen here, cause it was one of those movable screens. So let's put the screen up here, and I'll, I'll release the flu. Big squirrel fell out of there, and it went, ah! So, you know, they have the ash pit door on the outside in the old homes, so I told my wife, I said, whatever you do, don't let that squirrel out of this. And it had jumped up against that screen, and it grabbed it, you know, and she was, she said, here we are, here we are! So I left, I got the, the ash pit door open, and it went out there.
Mayor, I have a house.
Man, those things are wicked. You don't want it in the house.
I wanna announce, for the benefit of the council, I'm putting in five dollars. I'm holding the five dollars in my restricted account to put with five dollars I received from Jim Benson about three months ago. But I haven't received any other money, so we got ten dollars in there now. And also...
Yeah, what is it?
If the phone, if your cellphone goes off during the meeting, you're liable for five dollars. And I don't think anybody would've realized that if my good friend, City Manager, hadn't pointed his finger over here.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a break and start calling everybody.
Thanks, Paul.
That's another revenue generator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One quick question is, and maybe it's not so quick, but I'll ask it anyway. Having done the polling, the keypad polling, and looking at new revenue sources, in light of that, does that change any of the priority setting that you did? Or are you happy with what you've given us so far, and want us to move forward with what you've given us so far?
Do we, we don't have a readout on how the... I mean, we, there's...
We can give you a quick summary.
I mean, when, I can't tell you to go run off and do it, because I don't have a sense of how the numbers netted out, nor do I have a sense of how the revenue plays out. So, I think we had people voting, uh, we essentially had people voting based on a list of text items that didn't have an associated dollar value. And I, just kinda watching, I noticed a lot of selections for things that had very little impact. And so, I'd be interested to see how that sums, and see if, hey, we had a bunch of support for items that are gonna total three hundred thousand dollars, is that worth our time? Whereas, you know, some of the bigger ticket items that were actually gonna have a, a real impact on the bit, on the budget, may not have gotten much, much traction. Does that make sense? So, I mean...
The item that polled the most in terms of taxes was sales tax increase. That has the potential to be a big dollar amount, depending on the percentage that you want to settle on. So, obviously, that's an area for additional staff work to bring you options for discussion. So, you know, that, that is significant. You're correct, otherwise, the, the other items were relatively, you know, smaller dollar amounts.
Can we summarize the top three tax and the top three fee items?
The first, twenty-six, forty, ten, tax increase, four...
Microphone.
Turn on your, uh, microphone.
Sorry. Uh, fifty-six on the first priority, um, and I just sent this Excel spreadsheet to Michelle and Roger, so if you guys feel able to accept it, then, but... Increasing court fees was fifty, fifty-six percent, that's their top priority. Thirty-three percent, their top priority was the political sign permit fee.
What's number one and what's number two?
So, there is tons of twenty-five percents after that, the first. There's no clear third. Clear first, increased court fees, clear second, political sign permits, but not a clear third. And I didn't track, sorry, I didn't track the second or third, I don't know.
It's not gonna give much revenue.
Not at all.
For the second, third. So, for taxes, sales tax was clear winner at fifty-six percent for the top priority. And then, forming a new GID had twenty-two percent in their top priority, and twenty-two percent for the marijuana tax. Marijuana tax was either first, second, or third, twenty-two percent, twenty-two percent, thirty-three percent. Forming the new GID was first, second, third, twenty-two percent, eleven percent, eleven percent. And sales tax was fifty-six percent first, and eleven percent second. It was also sixty-seven percent of you wanted staff to look at sales tax next year. So the, the top three of taxes would be sales tax, medical marijuana, and whatchamacallit? Yes, thank you.
Um, the fees, uh, are really not gonna bring in any real money. So if this council decides to adopt that, um, political signs, I would say, if we as a council vote to approve that, I'd recommend that that, what is it, six thousand? Uh, we send over to the seniors. If we're gonna do that, um, let them have the money. And, uh, the sales tax, if we're going to, uh, put something like that on the ballot, I would like to make it, that it goes on the ballot as a dedicated funding source, and it would be dedicated, in my opinion, for Parks and Rec. And that we need to give them a game plan of exactly what we're gonna do with that money, one, two, three. Um, the, the marijuana thing, uh, that needs to go to Parks also. Parks and Rec. And, I'm sorry, I just don't like the GID at all.
Yeah, I would have to agree. I have some real concerns about forming a new GID. That just scares me. I mean, I know the people in the Northern Ranger are already paying so much, and I hear it a lot from them, and I completely understand where that's coming from, so I have a great fear of forming a new GID.
Point of clarification, it would be in a different area, not overlapping the existing GID? The Tower, Tower Road area? Yes.
We're talking about the Tower Road area?
Yes.
Okay.
So the east of Tower Road.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I would agree in part with Ms. Carson. I think the, the idea of, if we were able to secure, if we were able to secure the sales tax increase, I think we need to be careful to dedicate where those funds go. But I think we need to put additional study into what the... But I think we need to put additional study into what the priorities are, where the most need is. I've been an advocate from day one for identifying and securing a dedicated funding mechanism for parks and rec, but we've got, we've got substantial needs. And one of those things to take into consideration is that our daytime population, what, doubles as a result of the folks that are here, which means they're using our roads, they're using our streets, they're using and wearing our infrastructure. And so, I, I, I mean, again, not a problem to solve for, for today. I think it's, maybe the theme to my comments is this. I think, I think this is a great start to the discussion, and I think we've come to some good points of agreement on the sales tax and on the, the other two fees that we talked about earlier in the discussion. But I feel like we've just scratched the surface. And we need to figure out how we continue this discussion to really get into the meat of it. I feel like we've been, we continue to sort of hold at this high level, and I'd love to get additional discussion going and get additional insights from folks on, on these items. That said, I mean, I see a number of things here that might have applicability. You know, no one fee is going to have a, you know, grand slim impact, but is the level of effort to implement a range of these fees really out of the question? Right? Are there any that we would want to take off the table? Maybe those will come off the table and we say, "Can you pursue these sort of across the board?" Because I see different departmental impacts, legal implications. I also see differences in who gets impacted by the item, whether it's, you know, the criminal, the speeder, the, you know, there's a public safety facet to some of these that we didn't even raise on our top list. Court impact fees, obviously somebody's broken the law. So a lot of these are not directly impacting our citizenry, or they're impacting our citizenry in a, in a penalty fashion. I think, you know, beyond that, where we can impose a fee on folks who are impacting our infrastructure, as I mentioned, with like sales tax and potentially putting a portion of that toward infrastructure, to me, again, you're, you're finding a way to pay the bills by the people that are, you know, it's almost a use tax, right? People who are using the facility help cover the cost of maintaining the facilities.
I totally agree. I would love to see the sales tax split evenly between parks and recreation and public works, where the people that are impacting the roads, that come in here, that they're paying for them and everything. And you'd be surprised that during the daylight hours, how many people that use the city, that live somewhere else, use the rec center too. So I would love to see that impact, that fee go split directly between the two. The marijuana fee, if we put that on the ballot, it's a recreational drug, but it's also medicinal, so I would love to see that all go towards recreation, parks and rec. If that is one that passes, I, it's not, if it impacts anybody in our city, it's impacting them because they're using it. So if we, if they're using it in our city and we have a dispensary open up, I would like to see the funds that are, the taxes from those funds go towards thunder. Now, on the fees, I, I have, I have a, a problem with the fees. Even though it says increased court fines, but I think we're kind of too fee-driven anyway sometimes. And I would, the only fee, maybe increased court fines, but the political sign fee seems like it's more trouble than what the income, it actually brings in. So I, I would have a problem with that one, because for making sure that everybody's paying it, I don't know if the person that would be administering that, if we begin to bang for our buck for $6,000, that would be one fee that I would take, it would take a lot of discussion on, and we would have to see what's it going to cost for staff time and everything else, because I do not believe this fee is going to be worth its time. Because what if he has 251 signs? Who's out there counting the signs?
Ms. Draker, can you just give a little bit of background? I mean, I think on some of these, there's some additional meat here that helps. I know you gave some insight into other cities in the area that impose a similar fee and the benefit of that from a sign control perspective.
On the political signs, at least in the past, I don't know if it's current practice in Westminster, and I think at Thornton maybe, they used to give, sell a permit tag or sticker that would allow those signs to be put in the public right of way. So they'd have to come in and there would be like a sticker that you could tell right off the bat. It isn't, doesn't raise a lot of revenue, but at least you know where they're at and you can kind of control where they're going. And in the most part, I think it moves most of them out into where they need to contact people anyway. So, and I think it's, we'd have to look into the details as far as how would we enforce it. But again, it's just a, a way of, hey, if they're going to use our public right of way, they're basically renting it from us. Roger, I don't know if you've got anything else you would add to that.
This is to you, Roger. I forgot what your last question was. It would've been going around and around here. What was it that you need from us?
It was a question whether the polling results, the fact that you're willing to raise revenues from various sources, if that changed the priority rank of the projects.
Or were we happy with our decisions we made previously?
Yeah, obviously, we're going to have to come back to, you know, with follow-up questions and discussion items, but that was just a preliminary question to see if there was a change in the priority ranking as a result of this polling that you did.
I'm satisfied with what I had before. It changes mine in the fact that if we're going to go after a sales tax increase, I would like to do, if we can, some kind of survey and polling and ask the, the public out there, if you're willing to approve this sales tax, what would your number one, number two, number three? I, I would much rather they tell us instead of us tell them how we're going to list those, those priorities. If we, Ms. Bauer, I don't know when we have to have everything done in order to get it on a ballot. Do we have time to do some kind of polling surveys or...
Well, we could put that on the ballot also.
Mayor, may I, may I say something in the meantime? We, we are, we're preparing a presentation for you, a brief presentation for you, on some recommendations, what it would take to do that. And I think what you're, what you may be alluding to is that there needs to be more careful consideration and more time.
Yep.
I think the first set of questions alluded to this November, and that may not be the best timeline for something like a sales tax. But we do have some ideas that we would float for you in terms of a process that would, that would better, it wouldn't guarantee, but it would probably fortify an outcome that council, the outcome that council will be looking for. So we'll, we'll prepare that presentation and have it ready for you.
Thank you.
But I think Laura's going to get you the actual timeline for this year.
We have to certify the ballot content by September 2nd. But keeping that figure in mind, Michelle, can you, I believe we have it on our website, could you pull the election calendar for me? With sales tax questions, and the city attorney can also chime in too, but with sales tax questions, when we prepare the notice, we've got to provide time for comments, both pro and con, and then those have to be summarized, and that is on the election calendar. That's what I needed. September 2nd is still the day that you have to verify the ballot content, is to certify the ballot content to the county for them to prepare the ballots. And then we start getting into some other timelines. But as far as the ballot content is concerned, that drop dead date where I have to deliver it to her both electronically and by hand is September 2nd.
September 16th is the last data file pro or con comment? Thank you.
With the sales tax issue, I understand it's something that we're kind of saying that we want staff to look more into tonight and not necessarily deciding on it. But I think what's missing in some of our calculation is where, if we do go for half a cent increase, where that puts us in comparison to other metro communities? Where are we over, are we under, are we consistent? I think that's important as well.
Roger's got that. Mr. Tinkenberg has a, I think he has a slide. One of the things while he's looking for that, I would mention is, you know, there's certain ones, I think, certain ballot measures might have a better chance than others because they're intuitive. I'm not going to say that I, I can prognosticate it, but, you know, for example, a marijuana tax, most, most people in Colorado know what that is, they've been hearing about it for the last three years. Putting something like that on the, on the ballot is a little bit more intuitive, that people may understand that, versus what a sales tax might be for different types of projects. And that, that would require you to put together a list of projects and say, "Here are the things that we want to fund with that money if we generate it." And therefore, you're going to have to, you know, go out and, and actually do a factual educational type program to all the different, you know, all the different groups around the city.
In answer to the question, the entire metro area, we're about right in the middle of the pack at three and a half. The cities that are next to us, including Denver, Brighton, Thornton, they are all higher than us by varying amounts. You see, Denver is at 3.62, Thornton is at 3.78, Brighton is at 3.75. Bloomfield is the highest at 4.15. Federal Heights is at four, North Glenn is at four, and then all the rest are in the three point something range. But metro area-wide, we're in the middle of the pack at three and a half.
Roger, one of the things I think that is not called out there are instances where, especially in the new retail developments around the metro, we see the introduction of the addition of a PIF. And so Brighton obviously has the PIF at Prairie Center, Northfield, I believe, has a PIF, Flatirons, Colorado Mills, each of those new retail developments obviously have one of those, which, you know, obviously adds to that tax. And I think there's a, there's another fee, Tom, we were talking about another factor, now I can't remember.
Thinking about the TIF?
That, that fits into that total tax. Typically, there's, is it just the PIF and the sales tax?
It's PIF and TIF and sales tax, and then also you've got RTD in the state and all that that adds on top of it.
You're absolutely right. Many of the new retail developments have a PIF, which is a public improvement fee, and that varies from center to center. And I don't have that data at my fingertips, but we can, we can obtain that in the future. This slide shows the total currently for Commerce City. So there's the state tax, RTD, as well as the stadium district and football, football district and the scientific cultural district, and then Adams County.
Roger, I still don't think everybody's getting the clear picture, though, of how low we really are. Brighton has a food tax, Brighton has a whatever, PIF, TIF, I don't know which one it is. And so this really is not, I don't think, giving people the clear picture of how low we are. And, because this is what you pay no matter what you do in our city. Everywhere else, that's their base, but then when you leave Home Depot, you're paying, what, 3% more than that or whatever? When you leave King Supers, you're paying the food tax. Everywhere you go, you're paying higher than what that is showing you there. So we're really low, that's...
Roger, is a PIF, that typically goes back to the developer, is that correct? Or is that shared with the city and developer to pay back infrastructure costs?
That goes back to the developer for improvement costs on the site. Yes, food tax would be the city's, you're right. You know, Federal Heights and Brighton, they, they have a tax on food. We do not. On groceries, I should say.
Mayor, Brittany Morris, Director of Economic Development, I just wanted to quickly remind City Council that a PIF was a major part of the dialogue between the city and King Supers and Shea, and we ultimately brought you an incentive package that did not include a PIF. So while others who might do their shopping up the street are paying additional percentage in tax, you will not be paying that at the King Supers up north, because we were able to present you with an incentive package that did not include a PIF, which ultimately would impact consumers.
Right, so, but even if we do get a sales tax increase, that's why I want people to understand, is we're not going to be paying the PIF here.
Yeah. No PIF. Sales tax would only be applied to anything that's non-grocery related.
I think J D brings up a good point, that while on that side, we're not the lowest, we still, in a lot of cases, have fewer taxes. We don't tax as many items as those other metro communities. So I, I think J D brings up a really good point in the sense that you almost have to look at this and it's not the, the big picture, it's not the entire story. So that's important to keep in mind. I understand what PIFs are, I'm trying to figure out what TIFs are. Yeah, I do shop in Brighton, yeah. Okay. Okay.
Sure. A TIF is a tax increment financing. It is not an additional tax, it is a redirection of the existing tax, if you will. So, but where it benefits a development is when a development comes in with basically new taxes in terms of new revenues, then a portion of that revenue is redirected to the project. And so that's why the increment is in that phrase, it's the incremental tax revenue that's redirected. And so it's the tax increment that goes to helping pay for the project. And so it can be set aside for debt service and issue bonds upfront, or it may be a rebate back to the developer for costs that they incurred at the front end. So it does not decrease the amount of revenue that the city would receive or other jurisdictions would receive from the existing base, but it looks only at that increment of new revenue over and above. So it doesn't change the tax rate, but it changes where the new revenue goes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, one other question is, let me get back to it, I'm sorry. We gave you a long laundry list of possible options for funding and projects and that type of thing. Are there other funding sources you want us to take a look at beyond what we've talked about tonight?
No.
Okay, I'm hearing lots of no's. Any other projects you want us to look at? I think I know, but go ahead.
No, you don't. I would like to look at a senior senate.
I'm sure you're going to have a hard time guessing what I'm going to say next, Roger. I'd like you to look at Boys and Girls Club again.
And I know you're going to have to work in conjunction with Jerry and Mr. Gray Clemens, but what it would cost for us to take over Highway Two, Highway Two. And if I hit the lottery, don't worry about it. And if I hit the lottery, don't worry about it.
Um, yeah.
Rec Center up north.
That's already on the list.
I am, thank you. If I may, then let me recap what, what I have heard tonight and see if this corresponds. When we were talking about existing money only, the two priority projects for only the existing money were Tower Road and Trails up north. Then when we looked at new revenues, I'm sorry, yes?
Oh, sorry, continue.
Okay. Then when we turned to new revenues, you said move the vulnerable revenues out of the general fund, replace those with refuse collection fee, stormwater utility fee. So based on that, staff will be bringing those two proposals back to you for, for action. Then you directed that staff start working on increasing court fines, and staff start working on an increase to the sales tax. And obviously, that's gonna take a lot more discussion and formulation. In addition, we'll take the keypad polling results and analyze that and come back to you with, you know, basically the results of that and see what further discussion comes out of that. In terms of use of the sales tax, I heard individuals comment that you wanted to look at Parks and Recreation and Public Works. But I also heard, polled, surveyed the public to see what they would support. So those are the three things I heard with sales tax. I heard you don't want us to look at any additional new revenues, and I heard that you would like us to do some more research on senior senate, Boys and Girls Club, Highway 2, Recreation Center up north. Am I missing anything, or anything you don't agree with?
Roger, what did you mean about us not wanting to look at additional new revenues?
I asked, I meant it in the terms of anything that wasn't on this list that we showed you.
Okay, great, thank you. And just with the, the existing funds, maybe, maybe I misheard and that, it's probably my mistake, but I thought we were looking at both Tower Road and 96th Avenue A, but that might have been my mistake.
Okay, I, I can incorporate that, I...
I mean, I'd like us to look at 96th Avenue A.
Okay, Mrs. Tito, it's also like for you to look at...
Well, I can talk. Police substation. It was on the floor, remember?
Yes. If I could jump in for a second, I, I know we said not to look at the fees, but I'm, I'm just, I can't help doodling over here. If we look at the red light camera, speed control vans, increasing of court fines, and additional traffic officer, it's about 650K a year, based on these, this model. To me, those would all make great sense to direct toward a public safety line item, and either those get used to help fund expansion of our facilities or otherwise, but those to me are, again, they, these are items that aren't hitting anybody but the person breaking the law. So I know people are not big fans of the red light camera, but the last three times that I've driven down Quebec by the high school, I've watched somebody blow through the, the red light in front of the high school. We see him blow through the red lights on Highway 85. I watch him blow through the red lights on Highway 2 and 104, or Tower and 104, and almost get hit on my bicycle. So to me, let them get their ticket, it's, you know, fair warning, there's a, a big light in the intersection, stop or don't stop, you're aware of the penalty. So I, I'm not only for one additional red light camera, I'm for identifying with the help of the police department, strategic intersections, i.e. near schools or key intersections, and you know what? Hang the cameras, and if you don't blow the light, you don't pay the fine. But it would allow us to put a discretionary contribution toward funding public safety. I think similarly for the vans, it's a mobile asset, it can get, get deployed anywhere. I know we have limitations on what roadways it can get used on, if I'm not mistaken from our, our study some time ago, but what we see, or what I seem to see in working with the PD on a couple areas where I've had citizens show concern over consistent speeding, is that the vans show, or the trailer shows up, we monitor, we see traffics, speeds slow for a short period of time afterwards, we see the motorcycle units show up and do some concentrated enforcement, they write a few tickets, and then a few weeks go by, and then the pattern reemerges. And so, you know, that's an awfully challenging way to continue to proceed, and so I guess, to me, some combination of those vans and an additional officer to help provide that presence of law enforcement all make great sense. And I think we need to, I guess, using that as an example, I feel like we can't stop this discussion where we're at tonight and just say, all right, go ahead, because there's more to it. It's, it's, it's more complicated than we've allowed it to be tonight. So I'm suggesting, and I just did a quick look, and said, if I take the red light camera, if I, 18, 19, 22, 24. Chief, did I miss anything that's public safety related?
I don't think so, Jason, thank you.
But I think those with some level of, you know, you know, more than one red light camera, again, looking at strategic intersections, you identify, you know, between 600 and a million dollars a year for public safety. And that then helps cover what's currently in the general fund, or offsets something that's currently in the general fund going toward those ends. Again, I guess using that as an example, you know, I went back to Parks and Rec, our list from earlier. Mr. Tinklenberg showed us that after we dedicate dollars to shifting them out of the general fund, and we're left with about, what, 6, 6 million in a 10-year window. If we look at the, the three projects that we agreed were a priority, the, the sort of loop trail systems, that I think in the, in Carolyn's slide totaled around 15 million, if you break that into two 10-year blocks of effort, right, you're looking at roughly that whole bucket of those first three projects, loop trails north of 96th Avenue, O'Brien Canal Trail, and Second Creek Trail system, you're shy about a million dollars, just using those discretionary dollars over those two intervals. That's not accounting for grants, that's not accounting for one-time dollars. So you, you can sort of cross three projects off the list, assuming that you're using those dollars to go forward. We talked about Fairfax Park and that that's primarily grant funded, and the objective is to carry that forward with some matching dollars, which leaves the remainder of the list at about 49 million dollars in efforts that cover the entire city. Rec Center, Rec Center expansions, you name it. To me, that 49 million dollar number becomes an item that we potentially look at in greater detail as a valid initiative, probably not this year, but maybe next year, so that you go to the voters and you say, here's, here's what the world looks like if we do nothing differently about how we fund Parks, Rec, open space and trails. Or we could add, and I don't know what the number is, and, and here's what we could do differently. Here's how we could fund these, these changes, these improvements and the maintenance. So I guess, yeah, I'm just trying to get the brainstorming going, because I feel like, I feel like there's more here we could be doing, and it may, you know, maybe not tonight, but I would like to suggest that we continue to brainstorm in this vein.
Yes.
Yes, I'm suggesting, oh yeah, I'm suggesting that those get mapped directly to public safety, yep.
But, but I think what he's saying, and the, and the main point, there is, there is, let's say, a million bucks going to public safety right now in the budget, this will offset that to go into something else.
Right, that's exactly it, yep.
Mr. McAdonny, I did not mean to sound like I was excluding those. The polling results, I think we'll pull those out, but we just need to analyze the percentages and bring that back to. So I, I think you're right, that is a future discussion, and, and we can give you that list in terms of the rest of the polling results. I just pulled the two top ones that stuck out very obviously.
What I heard, and what I wanted to make sure we weren't doing, was simply taking sort of the top X of the polling results from tonight and then sending you off, and the others sort of fall by the wayside. You know, I use the, I use the trash example all the time, because my first budget retreat, I said, are you kidding me? We have, we're, we're taking in what, and we're spending what? And it was not a, a popular comment, but here we are, kind of realizing that that's exactly the kind of thing we needed to look at. So I just, I don't want to see those fall away. I think we need to be putting that effort into those discussions from now all the way up until the budget retreat, so that we're really looking, yeah, I mean, this to me needs to be, you know, every week we should have a little item that gets extracted and we talk about or deep dive on it to make sure that we're putting the right effort toward this front.
So back, back to the, the list I gave you, is that the consensus? Are we good on that? And we'll come back to you with the polling results? Okay? Thank you very much. I'm done, I don't know, Mr. Flannery, if you have any closing comments, or, or anyone on council?
Only, only this, that we're going to put these together in a report, so the conversation doesn't end tonight, we'll, we'll bring them back next week and give you a copy of what we have, and then we can look at maybe setting, if there's needed, more discussion needed, we can bring that back within the next few weeks, so that that discussion can be had.
Before we leave, I do have one quick issue that we need to talk about, I promise it won't take long. Since we're on the discussion of taxes, just to give you a quick background, in November of 2010, the city council looked at a revision to parts of the tax code that related to the, to the trucking industry and services, and it was actually done to clarify the existing ordinance. The language in the revision appeared to create a policy change where the owner-operator settlements would be subject to a sales and use tax. And it was a sort of a, I think, a cleanup of the existing tax code, but what it did was it placed a great strain on the, on the motor carrier, just basically in general, this tax. It's just really become a difficulty for the owner-operators and the trucking industry and the services in general. So I would like to ask, and most of us, I hope, remember when we did that, I would like to ask the council to consider, basically, I'd like to give direction to the city manager and the finance staff to take a look at freezing the enforcement of, and it was 20-4-7, as amended in November 2010, and this freeze would be in place while staff holds and implements some stakeholder meetings, seeking input from the trucking industry, and the result of this process be back to, brought back to council for consideration in six months' time. So basically, what I'm asking for is a moratorium on this particular tax code 20-4-7, in order for everyone that has input. Several of the businesses, the trucking businesses in Commerce City have come to me in the last couple of weeks, and I think the reason why they, they reached out to me is because I am, since I worked for United Van Lines and have for 12 years, they know that I have trucking industry experience and that I understand the profit margins, and we really are quite unique in this tax. There isn't any other city anywhere that I've been able to find that has this tax. So I think it's definitely worth considering, I don't want to see us lose any businesses because potentially that could be the outcome of this, there are several of them that are saying that if we continue this tax, they may not be able to stay here. So I'm sure that Ms. Morris would concur that we need to have a stakeholder, some stakeholders' meetings and try to figure out how we want, we can better handle the situation. And so if we could just put a moratorium on while we have those meetings and discussions, I would really appreciate that.
What we need to do is...
Just direction.
I'm just looking for direction for us to come back to it, but I'd like for us to come back to it pretty quickly, if we could.
Okay.
Jason?
Is that something that can make it to the agenda next week or not? Yes.
That would be great if it could.
If it can, I think the other piece to this then is, how do we use this as a case study? The, the way in which this has impacted our business community, the way that this came before us, I think it, I hate to use the business case analogy again, but we lacked the, the analysis on what the possible implications were of enforcing this or tuning up...
Implementing.
Sort of implementing, exactly. And so I, I would just say that let's use this as a case study and, and consider how we then sort of build a template to guide future items like this that come forward, so we ask a sort of fixed list of questions, does it do this, does it do that, will it have this effect, so that we can sort of check those off as it comes before council, or have those prepared before that comes to council, and then we can obviously weigh, weigh based on that. Because I, I too have had a few calls and, so...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and I agree, and I think I've had some really positive conversations with the chief auditor and Mr. Tinklenberg, and, you know, that, that staff is doing what they've been hired to do and, and what the council's charged them to do. And I think, I think with this effort, specifically, they see different issues and they address them. And they aren't in the form of a new tax, they're in the form of clarification of the law, and so they're doing what they feel is right, and so I don't fault them for that at all. I think, I think in this process, as Mr. McAdonny mentioned, this should be used as a good litmus test to, to establish a process where we can all move forward with any type of changes to the code that actually can come before a group of stakeholders, no matter what that tax might be, and then a discussion among staff where their presentation is finally to council, so you have that full understanding of, of what took place and what process took place. So a longer process, but a more thorough protection for everybody.
Yeah, I would agree, I don't think that when it came to us, or, you know, through staff, that it was anything intentional to cause any harm to any business in the city. I know that that's not the way we think or the way we do business, but unfortunately, this had a very significant unintended consequence for the trucking industry here in Commerce City, and so now we just, I really feel that we need to sit down and take a look at it and see what we can do to fix it. Thank you.
Good.
Do we need to do anything as a council, or is it just a direction?
Just a direction. It's, it's, it's direction and we'll bring, we'll bring it back.
Okay. Any further?
I don't see it on there.
You want to do a resolution?
Yeah. No, there's nothing on the agenda for tonight. So if there be no further business come before this board, meeting adjourned, drive safe, going home. Yeah.
Yes, yes, I would. Yeah, it's, it was raining. We did?
Uh-oh.